Welcome, everybody, to City Council Meeting February twenty first, two thousand twenty-three in here in the Spanish Fork City Council Chambers. Thank you, everybody, for joining us in person and online and on Channel Seventeen. You'll see we're all decked out in our SFCTV gear that Brian will talk to us later about in the agenda, so the more exciting news to come with that. But thanks for everybody joining us. We'll get the meeting started off like we always do with a prayer motivational message. Councilwoman Beck has that for us, and then Councilman Argyle will lead us in the pledge. Councilwoman Beck.
Well, no motivational message besides just be good. Be good out there. How's that?
That's it?
Yeah. I think we all could work on that. So, and I'll offer the prayer. Our dear Father in Heaven, we're so very grateful for the opportunity to live in a community like Spanish Fork. We're thankful for the blessings in which we receive, especially for the water and the moisture we have received this year. We pray for the safety of those in our community, the children and parents who are out there shuffling their kids around. We pray that they will be safe, and please watch over them. And we ask that thou would watch over our first responders at all times. Please protect them, that they will be safe. And we're thankful for our volunteers and the people who serve in this community, and we pray that Thy Spirit will be with us this evening, and we say these things humbly in the name of Thy Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Golly, let's please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Argyle. Thank you, Councilwoman Beck. Takes us to item C on the agenda. This is handed off to Dale Robinson and Bronco Hunter, who are here to speak to us tonight about the employee of the first quarter. Mr. Hunter?
Thank you, Mayor and Council, for letting us still a few minutes of your time tonight. Can I invite Janice Odison to come up here real quick? Poor Janice has been preparing a Festival Lights debrief all day today, and she's not going to get to use it. Janice Odison, she started working for the city in nineteen ninety-seven at the, she was counterhelp, right, at the golf course snack shack? And she's only doing that for two months, and they promoted her to be the manager, right? That's pretty impressive.
She's seen the help before.
No, that's awesome. In two thousand, in two thousand and two, she took over the golf course operations. She was assistant. And then currently, from two thousand and eight to current, she's the concessions manager over all the concessions throughout the city. So if you go get food at the ballpark, you're going to see Janice there, right? She's currently, from two thousand and thirteen on, she was the caretaker, she is the caretaker at Canyonview Park. She is the chief maintenance officer for Festival of Lights. It's pretty cool. I called you the president of Festival Lights, but I think chief maintenance officer sounds way better. She's a, she's a do-it-all. She's a Wonder Woman. And I just want to highlight, if you look behind you here, Janice, you see all these employees here that love you.
I said to Dale, this is more than a stupid debrief.
And I just want to highlight some things that they said about you. You had at least six people step up on their own accord and nominate you for employee of the quarter. So just a few highlights from what they said is Janice is an incredibly hard worker. Janice has a super hard job, and she works so hard to make it a success. Janice takes so much pride in her job, especially when it comes to Festival Lights. Most people don't know Janice is the one that checks every single light bulb on all the structures. She spends a month and a half repairing structures, replacing burnt bulbs, replacing sockets, and fixing bad wires. What you don't know is Janice teaches volunteers and her youth employees how to do these repairs as well, but they're not as good as her. So she's really patient, and so when they mess up, she just goes and fixes it because she doesn't want to embarrass them. And I think she was talking about me and Dale this past year going down and helping her. You know, Janice really has one of the most challenging jobs in the city. If you think about it, you'll see her at the ballpark every night throughout the entire summer. You will see her at the Festival Lights fixing lights and then working through the entire holiday season. She's a trick of all trades. She's a hybrid. She is one of a kind, and we love her and appreciate her. And she's really not employee of the quarter. She's really not been employee for the last twenty-six years, and we're just finally happy that we can recognize her for all the great work she does. We love you, appreciate you, and thank you for all you do.
Okay, you get ready, because as soon as I'm done, he's going to make you give a speech.
Yep.
But it sounds like you have one prepared.
Oh, it has been my privilege to work with Janice for the entire time she's been here. And she literally, if you need somebody to do something, she's been put in so many different positions and excelled in all of them. And I'll tell you, the one thing that probably moves me more than any is Janice employs a lot of our teenage kids and has been their supervisor for years. See how some of them turned out?
My daughter.
Like I said, the next generation, right?
Exactly.
So Janice cares about these kids, and she teaches them how to be responsible employees and how to be responsible citizens in our community. And she goes above and beyond to teach them those skills. It's not just a job to her, to them. She takes it on herself and feels responsible to mentor these kids and help teach them how to be, how to be good workers and how to, how to take pride in their work. And I think that's, that's invaluable in our society today, that we're teaching kids to, they're getting a lot more than just a paycheck when they work for Janice. And, and I love that about her. But as Bronco said, she's a jack of all trades. If she ever decides to quit us, I don't know what we're going to do, because we're going to have to have four people to replace her with all the different jobs she has. But this is, this is long overdue to recognize somebody of Janice's caliber as employee of the quarter. And so, we love you.
Didn't you do that two weeks ago, guys?
What? Yeah, but you weren't here. You were in Arizona. So we waited for you.
Well, I went, I went away to get warmth, and it was like fifty degrees in Arizona for the month I was there, so it didn't do a lot of good. I sat and talked to Tracy today. She's my supervisor this year at the ballparks. And since I'm, what Dale said about the kids. I, I am praying and hoping for a better year with the ballparks, with our kids. I think we're in trouble, and I don't know how to fix it. I'm to the point where I don't know how to fix it. We can't afford to pay what all these other places pay, but I do promise them they're off for prom, that I won't hold them back from their church activities. We'll work shorthanded for this. But I do feel like I teach these kids. You'd be amazed how many kids don't know how to count that change. And I teach them how, that's in my interview, I have money in my office, and we, I teach them how to count that change. And, and they don't know how to do it anymore. I appreciate the city for all they've done for me. I started, is it twenty-six years ago? Twenty-six years ago, the thing that will have me retire is my health. I wasn't as good in the Festival of Lights installation like I'd like to be this year, because I, it's hard for me. I'm thankful for Emily for hiring the young kids that I can teach. And it's not just screwing in light bulbs. We have fires on the structures because the wires are getting old. I, I think I taught, I've been around Spanish Fork for a long time. I think I taught you primary? When I went.
She taught me the primary.
And I put up with a lot of people growing up at the golf course. We've had a lot of interesting happen, happen in my surroundings, from the golf course to the ballpark, to the campground. I don't know if you know, I take care of the campground. That's almost one of the most challenging ones. And I appreciate everybody. I got to know Bronco a little bit this year. He's making me learn how to communicate, which sometimes I don't really want to. But I do appreciate everybody for what, what they've allowed me to do for the city. And I don't know what I'll do when I leave, so I hope not to leave for a long time. But you guys know, a long time ago, I got sick, and it's still with me. So I appreciate everybody. Thanks, guys.
Janice? Picture time. Yep, picture time. Come right in front of us right here.
I don't, I have talks.
Yeah, she's on.
Let him have to put up with my story.
When she does communicate. Put a big arrow.
All right, here we go. One, two, three. Thank you. Congratulations.
I could, I could start with some stories in primary about Janice. I won't go that far back. But, but Janice, that's a, that's a long career that you've, you've had here. And that's an overdue, an overdue recognition for sure. But I will tell you, the most, the most recent touching example of Janice, not just, not just parks and a paycheck, like was mentioned, but the people that she takes care of. Every, every Fourth of July, the Mendenhall and the Gull family tries to get down to that park. I know. I miss her too. Thank you. It's her birthday today. Mom's birthday. But Grandma Gull, when she was still alive, and Janice didn't do this to just Grandma Gull. I saw her do this all over the park, that when an older person got out of a vehicle and was walking across a field to get to wherever they were going to have a picnic, Janice is whipping around in that cart, picking up garbages and taking them wherever, and she would not miss too many elderly people to transport them over to their picnic tables. And so, Janice, it is a credit to you that it's, it's not just about the park, and it's not about the paycheck. It's about the people. And you've lived that for twenty-six years of, of doing what you do. So thank you from the city, from elected officials, but from all the people that have enjoyed being around you. Thank you. It's well deserved. Yeah. Okay. Let's see. That takes us, anything else? Anybody else have a Janice story? She's great. She's a great lady. Takes us to item D, follow-up to previous comments. Seth, do we have any previous?
So with John Tyrell's request for some extra sidewalk along Eight Hundred North going out to the Valsa area, I reviewed that with our Streets Division. We talked through quite a few issues, and one of the hard things about us instigating these sidewalk projects is we have to acquire right-of-way to do it. It's very difficult, and usually we pay a lot of money for a small amount of right-of-way. So years ago, we developed a program where if any of the properties in this area want to add sidewalk and curb gutter to the front, if it's an interior lot, we'll pay half the cost. If it's a corner lot, we'll pay seventy-five percent of the cost. And so, we reached back out to John Tyrell and said, if you could go to these places and kind of explain that to them, that works out a lot better. If we, if we go, usually, usually it becomes very difficult obtaining right-of-way. And so, we're happy to do it, but it would be better if it was more grassroots push to get it. And so, that's kind of what we suggested to him. I think it works well, and we've used that same policy and for several other properties in that area over the last twenty years. So.
So how much would it be for a resident if they're paying fifty percent?
So, I'm just gonna guess.
Yeah.
But I would say they would be in the four to eight thousand range for curb gutter and sidewalk. Normally, if you're in the rest of the city, you have to pay for all of, all of it in front of your house.
Just when you're building the home?
Mm-hmm. You pay those costs. But, but in this area, it's kind of the older blocks, part of town. We came up with that policy.
Chris, before you go, we've talked about the crosswalk situation on the top and center by the junior high, middle school.
Junior high? Is it a middle school?
What is it?
Middle school.
Middle school. We implemented some stuff over the last little while. Do you know how that's working?
So, our traffic engineer actually went out there and kind of helped the, the person who came to City Council. And his comment was that it's actually working really great.
Oh, good.
And was really happy with kind of the changes and also just how we were doing things. What we're learning, and this has proven itself true at Rock Bank as well, that if you have a school zone, you know, twenty mile per hour school zone with the flashing lights, and you have a, the RRFBs, so the beacons that you can push the button and it flashes, and then when school is about to start or end, you have the crossing guard, that it's almost a hundred percent compliance.
You layer all those things on.
Yeah, those three layers. But you do other things. They never quite get up to, it's ninety-nine percent. So we think that's the best program. We'll, we'll be proposing that some other places in town, like on Eleven Fifty East and some others. Adding those three elements is actually a very effective way of doing it. So. Anything else?
Good.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you. Thanks, Chris. Any other previous comments, Seth? Okay. That'll take us to council comments. Item number five on our agenda, excuse me. Can you just slug me in the arm when I skip over public comments? Okay, public comments. Anybody from the public that would like to speak to the mayor and council? Not about maybe a specific agenda item that's coming up later or anything, but any general comments to the mayor and council, public comment? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move now to council comments, and we'll start with Councilman Carden on, on that end. Councilman Carden?
Thank you, Mayor. First, this was my first year participating in the Valentine's Day thing with the high schools. And thank you, Mayor, for inviting us to, to go there and the Nebo School District and ALA for letting us go to the schools. It was a great time. I think we'll talk a little bit more about that maybe at other times. But it was an awesome experience to, you know, be able to share Valentines with the different high schools. So with that, I'll invite Kathleen Levitt up from the chamber.
Thanks so much, Mayor and Council. It's good to see you all. I sent some photos over to Nick if he might help me out with those. Thank you so much. So for a short month, we've had a super busy month, which has been really good. Starting us off, we had, we celebrated ribbon cutting at the Core Pilates Studio, which was really a lot of fun. It's right over there by the Sleep Number across from Popeyes. There's another photo on there where Lance Wilson with State Farm demoed it for us. So that was pretty cool. There's a video on our social media if you want to check it out. It's, it's pretty, it's pretty intense. Actually, for as intimidating as it looks, they invited me back for another class, and it's really low impact. So it's a pretty neat thing. It's very, it's super popular. They almost didn't have a space for me to take their class. So if you guys are interested in Pilates, go check it out at the Core. The next thing I put on here, I forget what order I sent you the photos. So if you, you could just like kind of go through and guide them. All right, then we had a ribbon cutting at America's First Credit Union, which you all were there, which was really nice to see you. Their new location is open. It's really, really beautiful. So we were able to celebrate that and welcome them to that new studio. They had some mascots there, which was, I don't know why mascots kind of freak me out, but it was fun happening. They had a really good, they had a really good ribbon cutting there. All right, so the next coming up, oh, after that, I was able to go and sit on the House of Representatives floor with Representative Stephen White had me out to the Capitol, so that was a super fun experience. They were voting on the bill for the Young Entrepreneurs, which passed to kind of keep that safe so their taxation doesn't increase for, you know, smaller business people. So that was pretty cool. There also may or may not be a new state mushroom, so super exciting things happening on that floor. So our Easter egg hunt is coming up fast. That's going to be on April first this year at nine AM at the ballparks. We want to thank our event sponsors for that, IHC and Grifols Biomet, as well as really dozens of bike, basket, and field sponsors. We are doing the Adaptive Needs Field again this year, which is the only one that you need to pre-register for. So if you guys know anyone who would like to take advantage of this, this Adaptive Needs Field, have them pre-register. It's on our website as well as our social media, and that's being sponsored by Compassion Mobility this year. The next thing, we want to recognize our business of the month is Jurassic Taco for the month of February. They asked, I just got off the phone with them shortly before coming here, they asked that I help them to promote their fundraiser that's going on actually tomorrow. So the owner's son, the owner is George Garcia. His son was really good friends with Dylan Silva, who I know you guys mentioned him last council meeting. So he came to his father and asked if they could do something, you know, to, to help the family. So they reached out to the family, and the family asked actually that they helped to support the American Foundation of Suicide Prevention. So what they're doing is they have seven locations in the state of Utah, and they're offering tomorrow all day at all seven locations, twenty percent of the proceeds of their sales are all going towards the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention. And actually, all of the seven cities are keeping those funds local. So I mean, they're all the way across the state. So any funds that are raised in Spanish Fork are going to be helped, are going to be kept in Spanish Fork to help our initiatives here, as well as in all of those other cities. So if you guys can help spread the word, that will be all day tomorrow on February twenty-second at Jurassic Tacos. So that'll be on our social media as well as our website. So that's all I've got for you guys. Thank you so much.
So if you had Taco Tuesday, make it a Taco Wednesday.
It's Taco Wednesday. Yes, they're really shifting. Why do you stick to just Tuesday when you could do Tuesday and Wednesday?
And one thing I wanted to mention with the Easter egg hunt, you may have noticed that the date is a little bit different than normal, because Easter is actually on the ninth this year. That had to do with some scheduling of the ball field. So it's August or April first, not August. That would be way different. But just make sure to put that on your calendar, and if you are five minutes late, you're late, and you won't, it'll be over. And moving on, I had my first opportunity to attend, attend the Art Council meeting, and that group has a lot going on. So currently, they are working on, they have a couple plays going on. Nick, if you have that website up. So Matilda is going to be being produced during Fiesta Days or being shown, I guess. But auditions are coming up April thirteenth, fourteenth, and fifteenth. So Shane, get your musical ready.
I'm ready.
You got that pose? He's going for the lead. And they are, they're really excited. A lot of things going on with that. They also are getting ready for the Youth Arts Festival, which is, you don't think about it when you're, you know, in the middle of winter, but that's going to be happening in June, June fifth through sixteenth. Registration will open on May third. So it's a little bit away, but I just want to kind of put that on people's thought process. But the Art Council has a lot of things going. They're already talking about the Harvest Moon Hurrah and other things that are going on in the city. And that's all I got, Mayor.
Perfect. Thank you, Councilman Carden. Councilman Argyle?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. The Rotary had their luncheon today at ALC, which is the which is the Advanced Learning Center that Nebo School District has in Salem, and Kathleen was there today. That was cool. Six years ago, we went to the ribbon cutting of that when they opened up that center and we had an opportunity to listen to some of the students. And I think what an awesome asset this is to our community, that the kids can leave school and go to this Advanced Learning Center, hands-on development, and those kids that spoke to us said how wonderful it was to go there and have experience hands-on. They have companies that come and want some of their products to be tried out and built at that place and engineering. They have an aviation, they have a simulator there that I didn't know they had, but they do have a simulator for flight and it's one of their more popular classes. And those kids can go there and they're not required to be there, which is, I think about when I was back in high school, when you're required to be somewhere, it makes a difference. And they mentioned that, that the learning there is so much different because they can just choose to be there. They can choose the classes to be there. And what an awesome value that is, Nebo School District offers to our kids. Couple of them already will have their associate's degree before they even leave high school, giving them a big jump and helping them decide what they want to be future in life. It's a pretty neat center, what's going on, and they're doing a lot of good things. And then I just want to, this year was our second year of taking Valentines around to these high schools and thank you, Mayor, for doing that. When we went to Maple Mountain, they had just experienced a pretty tough time. They'd had one of their students who had committed suicide. So it was pretty touching. When we talked to the principal, he said things were better, but they were still struggling a little bit. And for us to bring a Valentine and just take two minutes and say, "We care about you, you're important, and we love what you're doing and we love you," just a couple of simple words to these students. And Mayor, if it saves one life, it's worth all of that, that time and effort and money that it takes. Our student council, I just want to recognize them. Two years ago, we spent a late night up in Zermont in Midway sticking, and Shane had to run to the local store and get every single bit of glue and tape that they had so we could finish the project, but we got it done. We stuck a little tree on them. This year, the council did that for us and had them all ready for us to hand out. I only got the opportunity to go to one school with them and they went to the rest of the school and I'm sure the acceptance was very much appreciated and I've heard a few comments already. So thank you, Mayor, for that. It's small things that sometimes make those big difference. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Argyle. Councilwoman Beck?
Thank you. A couple of things I wanted to give you, updates on the Leagues sitting on the Legislative Policy Committee. The League has looked over and studied over 100 bills specifically this year. In comparison to other years, there are about 60 more bills this year than there were last year. For example, in '22, there were 492 House bills and this year so far, there are 531, and the Senate bills are up by 10. So the League is really busy representing the cities and towns throughout Utah. This week, the League is looking at homelessness service amendments, transportation, funding and taxes, gravel pit taxes, 32-foot standard for roads, and then housing. And they're looking at maximizing housing density along major transit investment corridors, and they said 125,000 permits have been given in the last three years in Utah, and Utah is the number one fastest-growing state in the nation. There's a little update there, and then I just wanted to touch base with Miss Spanish Fork. The 2023 Miss Spanish Fork competition will be held on Saturday, April 29th, and applications are available online. You can just go into our search tab, Miss Spanish Fork, on the search tab on our website, or go to the Parks and Rec site. Grace Ahanger is our current Miss Spanish Fork, and it's just really interesting to watch each one of these young women who choose to serve for a full year. They can just kind of make this what they want, and this year Grace has just dove in and has been quite incredible. This month specifically, she is going to every single elementary school in Spanish Fork and letting the children know about love, how to share their love with others, and giving them a challenge to reach out and share their love. And then they have to report back and the class that does the most love in the community, she's going to provide a pizza party for them. So it's just really cool to watch these young women just serve their community and share what they know up to this point in their life, and I'm really proud of Grace. And I guess lastly, I'll just let everyone know, the Fiesta Days website is live if you want to be in the parade, if you want to sponsor in any way. A lot of the sponsorships are full, there's only a couple left, but you can hop online and see what's going on there. We love our new logo. It's right where you belong and the calendar's up there. Rodeo tickets are almost sold out, so even though Fiesta Days might seem like a world away, it's moving forward. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilwoman Beck. Councilman Marshall?
Thanks, Mayor. Just quickly on the Valentines, that was pretty cool. It was the first time I got to participate as well. I must have been asleep last year. I'm not sure where I was, but I was really, it was an honor to be part of that. When we went to Landmark, I'd never been into Landmark before and it was, it was super refreshing to see those kids just big smiles and like, thank you for remembering that we exist over here as well, and is a good reminder for me that we have a variety of, that we have a lot of diversity in our community. It was, it was good to be at all those schools. So thanks again for doing that. I appreciate it. That's basically all I had today.
Perfect. Thank you, Councilman Marshall. Councilman Euler?
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing for me this week.
Okay, I got a couple of comments. First of all, thanks in advance for the approaching storm, Chris. It's going to be supposed to be, I mean, they better not let us down because they've... Okay, we want it. We want it. Our snowpack's still pretty good, but it's going to be snowy on the roads too, so again, residents, thank you for your cooperation, for helping each other dig out of the events that we get, but thanks in advance to your crews and Jamie's crew for getting out there and keeping our roads travelable, travel-able, is that?
I believe that's...
I like that word, "travelable."
I might have come up with it.
Sarah, could you type that for us?
Yeah, let's put that in the minutes, and if it gets in the dictionary, it's mine. All right, thank you. Don't park on the street tonight. If you can avoid it, just get it in your driveway so those plows can get around the streets safely and not plow you in as well. So yeah, be careful. They say it's going to be a big one. Yeah, I want to talk a little bit about the America First ribbon cutting that maybe leads into the Valentine's Day that's already been mentioned, but Kathleen brought it up, a great event. Obviously, when we get to cut ribbon anywhere in Spanish Fork, it's a great event. This one, when they reached out and said, "Hey, can you speak a little bit at our ribbon cutting?" I said, "Sure," but it was impressive, and I have a clip that we've sent to Nick, that again, Pete and Travis and the whole crew taking care of us, making sure that these things are videoed, but I want the residents to pay attention how, you know, just how, again, hard your council works, how hard your city works, how hard your chamber works to make sure we're welcoming. This isn't a new business. They've been around 20-something years in Spanish, but it's their new location, so it's big for them, and it was, and we made it a big deal for them. And so I thought it was pointed to share her remarks here.
I am in love with Spanish Fork and I want the city council and the mayor to stand. Thank you. And I want to tell the group why. Obviously, I have a script, and if you know me, I've never gone on script, but I went last night and I wanted to know more about Spanish Fork and, you know, so we, Wikipedia or whatever, but I went on the website and it had a little post there on the city website and it said Valentine's Day. The city council and mayor have just delivered Valentines to like four or five schools, to all the kids. I just was so moved by that. Tell us, you did that, right? True story.
Annual tradition.
Annual tradition. Can you imagine having people as busy as they are going to these schools and handing out Valentines? And I don't know that I have this right, but I think it's some tradition where someone started that everyone gets a Valentine to make them feel valued, you know, and I would come here as Chair of the Board and say, "You're so lucky to have America First in your community, but actually, we're so lucky to be in a community like you." I mean, I loved it. On the website, there was a post for, "Sign up for softball. Sign up for this. Valentines are being delivered," and I just thought, "This is the place to be." So thank you for allowing America First to be in your midst. It's an honor for us and we are good partners and we will pay you back.
Linda Carver there, Chair of the Board of America First Credit Union, a pretty big deal in the state. I know outside the state, as far as an institution, 83 years they've been a business, 121 locations, 17 billion in assets, 1.2 million members, and some of those here in Spanish Fork, but I found it interesting that when she said, you know, when she thought, "Okay, I got to go to Spanish Fork for this ribbon cutting," she looked and just found some really good things about our community, down to Dale, softball signups going on, little kids' ball and everything else, and I just thought that was neat. They, multiple people remarked of all of you being there, of the chamber being there, and they said, "We usually do this and there's like five people and we do our thing and we're bursting at the seams." So thank you, Kathleen, for the organization of the chamber. Thank you, city council, for taking your time out, welcoming people, and it makes a difference for businesses in our community for sure. Valentine's Day has already been spoken of, but Linda saw that and was moved by that. I think, I think people do see that and see that it's not, you know, it's not just about the day-to-day operations of a city, but it's about making sure our residents, that all of you, everyone is seen, especially the youth that sometimes have tough things. I'll embarrass Seth a little bit, that little Perrin's girl there, Abigail, huge help to this effort. The mayor slacked in quite a bit on, "Hey, I'll get you these cards that we're going to hand out and I'll get you candy." That, by the way, a local benefactor, or excuse me, a business owner donates money every year to buy that candy and stuff and say, "Hey, get this, make sure you're doing that," and he's always, the last couple of years, he's always just called up a month before February and just said, "You were doing that right," and then brings the candy and it's done. So thank you, J Mart, for helping print those cards and getting them out, but Abigail Perrin's, I was like, "I'm bringing them to you, I'm bringing them to you," and then like Friday before the Tuesday, I get them to her and say, "Here's candy and here's the cards," and they got it, they got it together, got it done, just like all the other high schools did as well. And so like Councilman Argyle mentioned, we were up late one night doing it the first year, but we've employed help of these student council people who just are going to go places. You can tell by their, how they get into it, get work done, and want to help out their fellow classmates as well. So some touching notes that I know we've all received from different people too, but I'll keep those private, but to think stuff like that doesn't make a difference in your community is, it does, it does. It's a big deal. It's a big deal for individuals, so. Thank you, council, for supporting that and keeping that tradition going that Mr. Sterling Brinkerhoff started four years ago, so we're keeping that going. Lana Heskey, thank you for helping organize this with all the high schools in town every year and making sure we're on track to get it going. Councilwoman Beck already mentioned the legislative session in full swing, so I won't belabor that, but appreciate your time, your work you're doing there with, along with our city manager and others that are up there to help on the voice of our residents, the voice of Spanish Fork, and we're down to about a week and a half of the last part of the session, so. Kind of fast and furious, the last week or so, but we'll continue to be engaged and watch what's going on up on the Hill until the session's over. Okay, that's all I have. Anything else from the council that you've remembered or anything that you want to put in council comments? Councilman Euler, you didn't say anything.
Yeah, just one thing that I did remember that I forgot to mention, had the opportunity to go to the first annual Fire and EMS Banquet Award Ceremony, so kind of a big deal. Wanted to make sure and mention that and congratulate those first responders that were recognized that night and that received awards. We have had quite a few retirements that were recognized as well, some of which were well over 40 years working for Spanish Fork City, volunteering in a lot of ways for our city. I don't know, Seth, if you wanted to address that. Brent Jarvis, our former fire chief, served 48 years in Spanish Fork and he was recognized that night along with some others.
Yeah, Brent Jarvis, Kenny Pruitt, Kay Thomas Perkins, and a handful of others. In fact, Brent, there's a retirement party this Thursday. I think it's from 3:00 to 5:00, 3:00 to 6:00, 4:00 to 6:00. They're at the fire station. The public's certainly invited to come and participate in that and express our gratitude to somebody who's been responding to fires for a long time. And our community is in a much better place today because of the service of Brent and many others, but on Thursday, we specifically get to give Brent a very well-deserved appreciation and send off, if you will, for his retirement. 4:00 to 6:00. Thanks.
4:00 to 6:00. So yeah, just wanted to tell Chief Eddie Hales, thank you for putting that together. I think that's a great way to recognize our first responders in our community is through an awards banquet, so that's all I had. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you for remembering that, Councilman Euler. Yes, this Thursday down at Station 61 on Main Street. Drop by in the late afternoon, evening and congratulate Chief Brent Jarvis, a great career at Spanish Fork. And if you've ever been close to an accident or been in an accident or anything that's happened in Spanish Fork, you'd recognize that guy because he was there. So come say, come say thank you to him. So good, great career at Spanish Fork and we're in his debt for his service, for sure. So thank you, Seth. Councilman Euler for pointing that out. Okay, that takes us to item number six on the agenda, Spanish Fork 101, the Green Exchange. We were getting all excited about lawns actually being visible. Now they're going to be under eight inches of snow.
Fall's winter.
Yeah, so put...
Fall's spring.
Put that mower right back in the shed and get the snow blower primed again.
Throw some fertilizer down.
Secret to a green lawn is mowing in February. That's what I've been told.
Well, we're going to run out of February with...
Tomorrow.
Shane, or pay someone to mow your lawn. When's the earliest...
Change it all to...
When's the soonest you've ever fertilized, Chad? You've had the lawn longest here on the council.
Probably 1st of March.
In 1st of March?
Catched the last few rainstorms. Last few years, it's all been pretty, your lawn's been there all winter long.
Yeah, that's true.
This has been a unique year.
Get down to IFA and get the...
Step one.
Step one.
Okay, we're really excited to roll out the fourth year of the Green Exchange Program. This is done in conjunction with Provo, Manthai, Salem, Nephi, and Lavine through UNPA and go to the next. Yeah, switch them. That'd be good. Yeah, switch them, that'd be good. And what it involves is we offer a rebate of three hundred dollars if you will take your old gas lawnmower, turn it in for an electric lawnmower, or if you get rid of an old gas snow blower and get an electric. And then fifty dollar rebate if you get either like a leaf blower or trimmer. There's some other things, a chainsaw, any of those type of pieces of yard equipment, changing it out for a, a gas for an electric. And the reason why we do this is because the emissions, the, these pieces of equipment do not have carbureators on them. And so, they spew out a lot more emissions. The study that I read, which was actually conducted in Sweden, but this, it's an oily emission that, that these put out. And the equivalent, if you run a gas mower for one hour, is a hundred mile car trip. So, one, one hour on, on a lawnmower is like driving a hundred miles as far as pollution goes. So, that's quite a bit and, and air pollution is a big issue in, in our valley where we kinda trap some of these pollutants in, in these mountain valleys. And so, we've, we've kinda felt like this is kind of a win-win in that we get cleaner air and we're using more electricity, which helps pay for you to make cleaner air, if that makes sense. So, so this is sponsored out of our, our Power and Light Division. It's been a huge success. We, our first year, we budgeted fifty thousand dollars, second year seventy thousand, then we're back to fifty thousand. We'll probably just keep it at fifty thousand dollars in, in the budget each year. We sell out in two weeks. It takes two weeks and, and all fifty thousand is, is reserved. So, I'm gonna give the date when you can start calling here in a minute. But, but I wanna point out something. Using these numbers, in 2020, we started saving three hundred and fifty thousand car miles equivalent of pollution a year. So, I'm not, that's per year. So, so all of the lawnmowers and stuff that we helped get onto the lawns, if they were used year after year, that's three hundred and fifty thousand miles of car drive. So, the next year, with the seventy thousand dollars, we're able to bump that to about seven hundred and fifty thousand car miles worth of pollution taken out of the air. And, and then this year, we're at one point one million. So, altogether, you add those up. So far, with this program, and we've spent a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, we have removed the equivalent of two point two million dollars worth of car miles equivalent pollution, which is such a great thing to do with a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. So, great program, really excited about it. We think it's a good one. So, if you're interested, March first. Get online, get your reservation. It's first come, first served. As soon as the fifty thousand dollars is all reserved, we cut it off. We don't keep a waiting list, so it's just cut off and then you have to wait till the next year for first come, first served. So, March first is when you can get on. Any questions about that?
You picking up our gas mower or we gotta take it somewhere?
Good question. So, what we do is, is you have to bring in a receipt from the Lowe's or the, the Home Depot, Walmart, Ace, wherever you get your, your, your lawnmower, you bring in the receipt for that. And then you also have to bring in a receipt from the transfer station that you disposed of a gas lawnmower or, or a snow blower, whatever it is. And if you bring those two receipts in or, or submit them to us, then, then you get your refund. And one equipment per household per year, but you get a lawnmower this year, next year, do a snow blower. But I've learned, so I, I, when I was kinda formulating this idea, I went and bought a snow blower, lawnmower and all these things, I did without this program. And I've learned with the snow blower, get out early and often. If you wait till two, they don't have as much girth as, as the old gas one, but, but it works great as long as you, early and often, that's, that's the secret.
Not the case with the lawnmower. So, I did Green Exchange two, two years ago, probably in the second year. And I was hesitant because I've always used a gas lawnmower, right? You always hear, oh, they're more powerful, gonna do the job. I've not been disappointed at all in my electric lawnmower. So, I'd encourage you, get out, swap them, get rid of the gas, get the electric ones, they work just as well.
Some, some really high-quality brands are getting in the market now too, so you, you can get a good, good electric lawnmower now.
You did it early on a Saturday morning, not wake up your neighbors.
Or you can do, the other thing, you can do them late at night because they've got lights on the front of them. You can turn the light on and mow your lawn.
Amazing.
You can hear the music that's in your ears and you don't smell when you're done.
Fantastic. Don't spill gas on your driveway. It's awesome.
They're a lot quieter. One thing, like with the gas lawnmower, and I'm sure you all do this, you, every fall, you put it up on, on like little sawhorses and you drain the oil out of it and you're freshening the oil. You all do that, right?
Of course.
You don't have, you don't have to do that with these electric lawnmowers, you know?
And know there wasn't oil.
No, no, it's not working.
Now, there's another level as well, and, and you get the rebate, but it's not gonna cover too much of it, but they have these robot lawnmowers where you just, every two days, they mow your lawn.
You won one of, one of our meetings, right? Have you used it?
Yeah.
And?
Yeah, it was, I didn't think it would work, but it worked. It was great. Every two, it's, it's funny to say, because like if this is your lawn, right? It goes out there and it just, it goes all the way around your lawn and then it just goes, like it just all directions. Like, how is that ever gonna work? But it did, it just.
You didn't have weird random spots?
No, but it doesn't save you any time because you and all your kids will just sit there and watch it. Hours.
Might as well mow it.
You might as well, yeah, get the exercise.
Thanks, Chris.
Thanks, Chris.
Hopefully they don't have a, yeah, that's how it goes around your lawn.
Oh, yeah. I bet kids would love chasing that around the yard.
That's what we want. Go chase the lawnmower, kids.
Don't stick your hand underneath.
Got what Stacy says, go chase the lawnmower.
If you don't have a truck to haul your old lawnmower down to the dump, Councilman Argyle will be running around on Saturdays.
Sure. Yeah, I like heading to dump.
He's on his way anyway. All right, good stuff. Thank you, Chris. Takes us to item number seven, consent items on the agenda. Any questions on the consent items? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Motion to approve consent items.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Argyle, seconded by Councilwoman Beck to approve the consent items. Councilman Euler.
Yes.
Councilwoman Marshall.
Yes.
Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
Councilman Carden.
Yes.
Consent items are approved. Takes us to item eight, A, new business, Spanish Fork Community Network SFCN rate increase, but then after the rate increase, SFCTV introduction.
Ah, that'll be fun. Before I get started though, I probably oughta mention, I saw this year, electric riding lawnmowers. So, if you haven't seen those yet, that's, that's an option too, little zero-turn, all-electric lawnmowers. Thank you. And on the Valentine's topic, I had a chance this last month to meet with the Youth City Council and talk a little bit about SFCN and thinking of the Valentine's Project and all the efforts that they do and that you do, Mayor, thanks. It's a great program. And those of you that are involved in the Youth City Council, good group of kids, hope it's good work. All right, you know, this is one of those topics of all the cool things that come before the city council. This is one of those topics that I don't particularly enjoy, the annual rate increases for cable TV. The, it's kinda one of those necessary evils, right? We don't control it, we're not the ones that get to make up those rates, we just pay what the broadcasters say we have to pay to carry their channels. But this year, this is a little bit different. I was actually looking forward to this one, even though we've still got rate increases, we're not going in the negative yet, we've got the SFCTV that we're gonna talk about, which is really gonna make a little bit of a difference. So, we'll just jump right into it. Twenty twenty-three price increases are going up. Basic is going up to forty-five thirty, expanded basic one twenty-one seventy-nine, super digital's one thirty-eight twenty-four, the full package one seventy-two twenty-five. And the premiums, here's one thing that we're doing a little bit different this year on the premiums. I thought we had a, this one has a button, there you go, the middle one. So, you'll notice the Stars Encore actually goes down two dollars, which is really unusual for us to have rates that come down. But this year, the national, they changed their, they changed their acronym, it's still the NCTC, but it's National Content and Technology Corporation that we're a member of, that does the negotiations for all of these broadcast channels. They negotiated a new deal with Stars and Encore that basically said, if we lowered our price a little bit, we could pay a little bit less. So, we were able to bring that price down and save ourselves and our subscribers a couple of bucks on Stars Encore. So, it's actually going down two dollars. And then HBO and Cinemax, they don't change. So, before we get your thumbs up on our rates for twenty twenty-three, I wanna talk a little bit about why I'm excited that rates are going up nine or twelve dollars or seventeen dollars for the super digital. We're gonna talk about SFCTV. I love the jackets. Thank y'all for supporting, for those out in the internet world there watching us on TV. SFCTV, this is a product we're gonna launch this year. We have launched, right? Now, we can't do anything about the broadcasters raising their rates every year, but what we can do, and what we did do this year, is we made a better product for our customers. So, this is fun, this is actually exciting. So, what is SFCTV? It is a streaming cable TV platform. It's an app that runs on all sorts of streaming devices. Amazon Fire TV, Apple TV, Android, Android TV, iOS, which means your phones, whether you're an Android or an Apple iPhone, the app will run on your phones, the web browser, you can watch it right in, right in your web browser. You can get all of your same cable TV channels through streaming now. And the device we recommend is the Fire Stick, Fire TV Stick 4K Max. And there's a lot of devices that'll work. We recommend this one because it, it works really well. The channel change is nice and smooth, the, it has enough memory and processing power that it just, it works really well. So, if you're looking for a recommendation, as you move to this, that's what we'd recommend. So, this service is actually going to replace the cable TV signal. So, that's one of the things that we're gonna be able to do in a year and a half. So, ten, seven, twenty-four, we're gonna turn off that coax cable TV. So, we got more than a year and a half to get everybody moved over to the streaming platform. If you want some more information, you can always check out, go to our website and you can click on the SFCTV more information. I've got a little screenshot for you here in just a second, but there's a lot of cool information here. But let's, I wanna talk about some of the high-level things that, that people are gonna wanna know. Why SFCTV? Why is this, why is this important for us? We know that the whole cable TV industry is moving to streaming technologies, right? All of the content providers, HBO, Paramount, AMC, they're all offering their own streaming packages, which is great, but you add them all up, you get them all together and you're paying an awful lot of money for a bunch of different packages. This lets us keep our cable TV package in one streaming spot, one streaming app. One of the ways that, one of the things that I like about this system, that's gonna help us with those rates that go up this year, most of our customers, almost, more than two-thirds of them, almost seventy percent of our customers are expanded basic cable TV customers that are renting two or more boxes, a DVR or two, or a whole home gateway. Those boxes that you're renting every month, you don't have to do that anymore. The SFCTV product has all of those features built in. It has the guide, it has the, the DVR, it has everything that you want in those boxes just in the app itself. So, bring us back those boxes, let's get that off of your cable TV bill. So, even though the package rates are going up a little bit, you get to save more by bringing that equipment back to us and moving over to the streaming side of it. Now, there's no cost difference to move you over to the streaming side. I'm not, I, I don't want any more money to move you to the streaming product. It is, the, the cable TV rates are what they are, but what I would do is encourage you as quickly as you can to get moved over to that streaming service. It is available now and I'm gonna show you here in just a second how to sign up for it, how to get us, how to get yourself on the list and get moved over to it. But a couple of the other items, DVR, that's video recording for those that don't have it, but DVR has never been available on the basic cable tier. That's because it's a function of the set-top boxes that's included in the expanded basic programming. So, usually you have to have the guide, the, that comes on the DVRs to be able to record that content. And that guide has always been part of expanded basic or above. So, our basic cable customers haven't had the ability to record. Now you do. And DVR has never been expandable. You can't just add a bunch more hard drive space. Well, some of the gateways you can, but mostly, you can't do that. And now, it's just a click of a button. We can add some more DVR time to your subscription. There's personal profiles, parental controls, all of this, all of those things that you're, that you're used to, but we've also added fifty thousand hours of VOD, video on demand is what VOD is, that rotates monthly. So, lots of shows, lots of movies, we'll give you a little view of, of where that stuff's at. But just a lot of content that's just there. You can go watch anytime you want, outside of the normal streaming live channels. And then the last item that I'm really excited about, stats. We haven't had a good way to say, what channels do we wanna keep? What channels are popular? What channels does Nick watch? I still can't tell what channels Nick watches because the stats are aggregate, they're anonymous. But I can tell last month, how many hours or how many minutes Channel forty-two got watched. And next year, when we renegotiate contracts with Channel XYZ, we can look back at those reports and say, you know what? Nobody watched that channel. Maybe it's time to get rid of it. Maybe that helps in our negotiation, maybe it doesn't. We'll find out, but we haven't had those stats until now, so I'm excited about that. Let's do a quick demo. Nick's gonna kick us over to, I've got another remote here somewhere. So, this is, this is plugged into the projector, it's a Fire Stick 4K, little device, I think I got one in my pocket, looks like this right here, for those of you watching online. Pretty simple little device, but all you have to do is hit the search option on your Fire Stick, go down to search and search for SFCTV. The app will pop up, you load the app, put in your username and password that you get when you sign up for the service, and there's your SFCTV app. This app is on your phone, it's on your Fire Stick, it's on whatever else. So, with the SFCTV app, you've got the guide down here on the bottom that looks an awful lot like your traditional, traditional set-top guide. And you can just scroll through all of these and there's all your channels there. And probably one of the most important channels that I think we wanna make sure is actually working, we just got it working this last week, so we're really excited about it, is Channel seventeen. And we can kinda see what's going on there a little bit. We don't wanna cause an echo though, I don't think we're gonna do that. That would be, that would be a little echoing, but how about some ESPN?
Yeah, there you go.
Right? And put on a game. You see that bottom where it says play from the beginning? That's called look back. A lot of the channels support that. They give you the ability when you start into a movie that maybe started half hour ago, twenty minutes ago, it'll give you that option. Says, you wanna start from the beginning? You're just jumping into it now. You wanna, you wanna see it from the start? Click yes and boom, you're right back at the beginning, you can watch the whole thing anytime. If it's something you wanna record, you can jump into, again in the guide, and when you're looking at the details of something, you notice you've got a record button down here. You can just hit record and it'll record that for you. If it's a movie that you jump into halfway, no worries, it'll record the whole thing, it'll be in your DVR, you can watch it anytime. Now, it's important to note that the recording, the look back, the skip ahead, all of those features are controlled by the programmers of, that own the content, right? So, every channel's gonna be a little bit different. It's not ubiquitous across the whole system. So, if, if the programmer says that that's a program you can record, you get to record it. Most of them are, but if not, you don't get to record it. What else do I wanna show you really quick? The shows and the. The shows and the movies, these sections right here, the video on demand. You can just jump into, these are all the, the shows. You can sort up across the top, uh, action, adventure, animation. Um, these are the, the series, the TV series. If your, if your kids are into SpongeBob. Jump into SpongeBob, get some information there. Um,
So let me, let me just add to the, when he pulls these up, these aren't things that you recorded. These are what the system has recorded for everybody. And so this is just video on demand for everybody. And you have all sorts of options and access to things. And these are just the TV shows. Is, is Bluey in there?
I don't know, maybe. But you've got movies as well. Same thing. There's all sorts of, all sorts of movies and they rotate all the time.
And these are the TV version of them. So if there's a movie that you, you know, you don't want to watch it, the real version of it.
These are all the television.
These are the television versions of it, yeah. So you can watch your, that's true.
Is that true?
You can watch Olympus Has Fallen and, and get rid of some of the swear words and some of the things.
Seth said it. I didn't. I'm not making that claim because I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I'll take your word for it.
Let's see, throw something up.
I'm not, I'm not going to risk that. But I, I do want to point out that some of them you'll see with this little upcoming tag in the corner. That means that it's not there now, but the programmer says, hey, in a, in a few days or in a couple of weeks, that, that will be there. If that's something you want to watch in the future and you want it available, if they, Cinemax and HBO, they're, they're one of the tough ones. They say, we're not going to let you record that because we put a bunch of stuff in video on demand. But if it's, if it's put out here by AMC or some of the rest of them, you'll be able to record it right from here so that it's available once it's on video on demand. You can just go back and watch it anytime. Um, in the, in the recordings section, you can jump in anytime and see what you've got recorded, what you've got scheduled on your recordings. And you can search for anything. One of the cool things about the, the uh, Fire TV Stick 4K is their remote. You can just say Arnold Schwarzenegger movies and let it do the searching for you. Oh, no match. I should have just, I should have just said Arnold Schwarzenegger. I haven't learned this all that good, but we're getting there. Now I can't get back. There we go. Let's go back to the beginning. Any questions on the SFCTV app? I know we, we planned on spending a few minutes uh, up at Zermatt, but we didn't quite have enough time for that, but anything else, anything else you want to see?
If they don't have the Fire Stick, can they still do this?
This is available on all sorts of streaming devices, uh, Nvidia Shield, TiVo Stream 4K. Um, all sorts of even, even no name generic devices.
Smart TVs.
Some smart TVs, if they're running the Android TVOS, you can load the app on there. There may be some additional expansion to that in the near future, but we're not ready to announce that just yet. I'm not ready to commit to that just yet. There is some other work in progress for supporting more of those smart TVs. Um, but all sorts of devices. The one device that you'll notice is noticeably absent is Roku. Roku just doesn't like to play in this, in this arena without charging you an awful lot of money. And we don't want to pay more money and have to raise our rates just to add this to Roku. So for now, unless they change their policy, Roku is the one device it won't be on. Now, if you have a Roku, um,
You need your Fire Stick and plug it into your Roku TV.
You could do that as well. You, a Fire Stick works great. And we have some of these. If you want to buy them from us, you can. We've got some for forty-four dollars, right? We, we buy them in bulk, but I will tell you, occasionally Amazon runs specials that are a lot better pricing than that. Now they limit you, it has to be a personal account. It can't be a business account. And sometimes you can get them for thirty-four, thirty-five bucks, but they limit you to two or three. So check Amazon first. Check Lowe's first. Sometimes these are even on the shelf at Lowe's. Um, but you can always get them from us if you can't find them at a better price somewhere else.
And if you've got a television in every room in your house, you need a device for each of those. Is that correct?
That's right. And you need SFCN internet service, right? That's, that's kind of a requirement. That's how.
Internet service, not, do you need SFCN internet use specifically?
It needs to be on the SFCN network, which is how this app and this device says, yes, you're, you're in-home streaming. You're allowed all the channels, right? If you take this and go down to St. George or off to, you know, Disneyland somewhere for the weekend, you'll get some of the channels, but only the channels whose contracts allow for what's called out of home streaming. Because you're not on our network. You're out of home. So a lot of your DVR content will be available, but again, all of those are just details that are, that are mandated by the content providers. They determine whether their content can be streamed out of home or not, or can be recorded or not, or can be watched out of home or not. So we just have to live by what they dictate to us. And we push for as many exceptions as we can get. We push for as much latitude as we can get. Um, and I'm hoping with, with these stats, we'll get even a little bit more in the future. Okay. Any other questions on the demo itself? Let's jump back to the other. Okay. How do you sign up? It's really easy. You come to our webpage and you see over here in the bottom left corner, you've got SFCTV. We've got some information here. There's a button that says more information. If you click on that, it's going to take you to the page with a big old sign up button right there. It's just two clicks and you're there. When you say sign up, it takes you to a form that wants your account number and some information from you so that we can get you in the system. Doesn't cost you any more. Once we get you in the system, you'll get an email to whatever email address you give us that you want to use as your login. And it'll say, go set your password. Once you follow that link and go set your password, you're signed in. Load the app on whatever devices you've got, sign in, there's all your cable TV. Fun stuff. We're really excited about it. As Chris said earlier, but wait, there's more, right? That seems to be the topic of the night. So this is the Fire TV Stick 4K Max. This is our preferred device. I've got twenty of these in the office. They're going to go to the first twenty of our customers that bring us their set top boxes that they're renting today. Bring us your boxes down to Mercedes. You got to take it down to our office, not the city office here, right? Bring the boxes into Mercedes. Let's get you moved over to SFCTV. I've got a free Fire Stick 4K Max with your name on it. If you're not one of the first twenty, ooh, ah, if you're not one of the first twenty, I've got some other TiVo swag that they sent us to help market this. You can pick out, there's some umbrellas too. They don't, it didn't fit in the picture. But we've got all sorts of fun stuff. And last but not least, your name, your account number goes in a drawing. April first, we're going to give away, do a little raffle drawing. We're going to give away one of these Fire TV cubes. Now, this is kind of like a hybrid between the Fire TV Stick and an Alexa, an Echo Dot. You know, a device that just sits by your TV, plugs in, you can say, Alexa, turn on the TV, and it'll turn on the TV. Alexa, open SFCTV. It'll open the app for you. So there's a lot of cool things with this device.
Alexa, make the bed?
That would be great. I would love that. That would be awesome. All right. Any questions?
That's awesome. I love the giveaways.
This, we are really excited about it. So all of you here, all of you that are out in TV land, if you're still on a coax cable modem, please get with us. Let's get you moved over to fiber. And sometime between now and ten, seven, twenty-four, please, let's get you moved over to streaming. Let's get you in the twenty-first century. And that would help us not have everybody calling the last week before we turn it off. Okay. Any questions?
Thank you, Brian.
Okay. Last thing I need from you then is a thumbs up on our rates for 2023.
Boo. When do you, yeah, and when, when do you want these? So for your sake, counsel, that there are some requirements given to us by the FCC on timing and rates and stuff. So maybe give them the clarity of when these are effective.
That's right. We will have little mailers that go out later this week with this information to all of our cable TV customers. So that everybody, even those that don't see city council meeting, will get this information. And rates will become effective on April first, which means you won't see the change in your cable TV bill until the May first bill.
But in the meantime, they want to get to SFCTV.
Oh, yeah. Let's, let's get you moved over. We've got a lot of customers. I'm not quite sure how they've, well, we, we haven't been super quiet about this, but we've had a lot of people sign up already. So.
I'm, I'm sure Nick is a quality TV watcher, so I'm sure he watches Grit TV.
And it's on there.
I'm not sure Nick knows what Grit can be.
Grit and the Cowboy Channel, our whole lineup, we've tried to mirror it almost identically to what our regular cable TV lineup is. There's with, with very, very few exceptions. There's three or four of the off-air channels that we carry because they're must carry, which means they've elected with the FCC a must carry status, so we have to carry them. They're not available in the streaming world, so we don't have to carry them. So.
Thank you. Good stuff. Thank you, Brian. Appreciate that. If there's no other questions for Brian, I know Brian and Seth have, have seen the, the, the birth of SFCN, uh, and now SFCTV. Seth, anything you want to comment on? Twenty years of a, of a part of our city that's uh, kind of coming full circle now and never stop innovating, I guess.
You know, at twenty years, I think we're just barely scratching the surface of what this utility will do for our community in the long run. Uh, and that's kind of hard to say with a straight face because it's been amazing for us for every one of those twenty years. But if you think back to the early nineteen hundreds, when we decided to get into the power business and, and uh, what that decision means for us a hundred and twenty-ish years later. You know, that's what this is going to look like, you know, a hundred years from now. Every, every internet signal needs a wire. That's just the way uh, the internet works. And so having the ability to run our internet through a fiber system that runs throughout all of the town, having a fiber ring and having all of these services is a great enhancement to our residents. And I remember, Brian, I don't know if you were quite here when we got the ICF award. I know you were, Brian's been here from the very beginning, but he wasn't an employee. I don't think in two thousand and six-ish, when we were nominated as one of the smart twenty-one cities in the world. And uh, that was a nomination. We don't know where it came from, but, but we were nominated and selected as smart twenty-one. So we're in with like Stockholm, Sweden and all these international places for things that they had done. And I remember I had a KSL reporter at my house. It was a Friday, late afternoon and I had already gone home. So he came over to my house to do the story and, and he was, this is two thousand and six, and so he was really struggling with this. Now, how is Spanish Fork a smart city? Spanish Fork, you got a bunch of cows there. And I had a great time chatting with him about what, what we have to offer and, and how this, this broadband utility was already changing the face of our community. And uh, you know, fast forward another handful of years, here we are, just continuing to evolve. And probably the best thing I can say about what we're doing with the broadband utility is that it pays for itself. That the customers that use it are the customers that pay for the services, that are paying all the, the costs associated with it. And they do it at an extremely affordable rate. The worst part about SFCN is that we have to pay broadcasters their prices. And, and if you pull up the rates and you look at, uh, pull up the rates for me, will you? If you look at the rates of basic TV, when we started this service, I want to say basic was five bucks. Maybe it was eight. Uh, I know at some point I remember seeing the number eight. Let's just say it was eight bucks. Um, so if you remember, this is what it is today. It's going up to, I think, forty-five. Uh, it's in the forties. That's the basic tier. Those are the channels that we, back in the very beginning of this, had to carry, those must carries. And at some point in the recent, you know, ten years, those must carries turned to, we want you to pay us carries. Like KSL and, and uh, channels two, four, six, no, two, four, five, thirteen and the like. So that has gone up. That, that was pretty much free. You could get the first, we'll call it twenty-one channels for next to nothing. And now that's the price that when we began, that was the price of expanded basic was, I want to say thirty-five bucks. So that's the most unfortunate side of it. And as Brian has said every year and John before him, that's just a function of the providers. We do not mark that up. We haven't marked it up in, I think from the day one. And so we've just simply kept uh, about a five dollar margin on that to provide the service that we provide. And uh, the rest goes to the different channels every year, over and over again. That's the saddest part about SFCN, but the coolest part about SFCN is the internet service that you get. And if you live in another, in another town, you probably pay a hundred and fifty bucks or more for the internet that you have. And here you pay, what package do you want, right? It might be thirty-five, might be forty-five, might be sixty-five. You get to choose and all of those are superior to other products in other cities on other providers. And uh, that happens here where we only have cows, according to that report. So even though we weren't nominated this year, I still think we're one of the smart twenty-one across the world. So thanks for giving me a chance to brag about our city.
Yeah, yeah, very good. It's uh, quite the, quite the utility and uh, and, and I think that was the question early on. Is this a, is, is, you know, is internet uh, a need in your city? Well, the argument way back when, long before, a lot of, we're saying that was yes, it's a need in our community. And it's only become that more essential in our, in our daily lives. So uh, very cool. Thank you to you and all your team and, and the city forefathers in seeing that vision as well. Um, now under the fun part of uh, raising a rate, who wants to do that?
I move to approve the SFCN rate increase and the SFCTV introduction.
Do you need the effective date of April one listed on there?
With the effective date for the intro of April one. Perfect.
Motion made by Councilman Euler.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Argyle. Roll call vote. Councilman Carden.
Yes.
Councilman Argyle.
Yes.
Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
Councilman Euler.
Yes.
Okay. Item A passes, takes us to item B, ordinance amending title thirteen of the Spanish Fork Municipal Code regarding curbside cans.
This is a really small change. Uh, we, we have a, a situation where if sixty-five percent or more of our garbage customers also have a recycling can, then we get a much lower rate on the pickup. And this hasn't really been a problem in the past. This is for the next item, but sir. But this hasn't really been a problem in the past, but um, we have a situation where if you're a multi-family uh, complex, like if you have townhomes or apartment complex, the state has said that that's uh, falls under commercial rules for garbage collection. And so cities cannot require them to have uh, city pickup garbage. And so our ordinance read something to the effect that, that everyone who has a uh, if you're in a twin home or a single family home, you have to get a, a black garbage can and a recycle can and keep the recycle can for at least six months. And then you can opt out if you want. But because it was written that way, if you were in a town home and you opted to get a black garbage can, we weren't bringing you a recycle can. And suddenly our, our percentage of residents with the recycle can started to plummet because we had a slew of townhomes getting the garbage can, but not the recycle can. So this just closes that gap and says, if, if you get a gar, a black garbage can, you have to get a recycling can with it for six months and then you can opt out. And we found that with that model, we always stay above sixty-five percent and we get the lower rate for pickup. I could have probably said that more concisely, but.
Maybe.
I thought we did this a while back.
We, we, we did. We, we set this not too long ago, maybe about eight months ago.
Right.
Where we, we said, hey, we're slipping below the sixty-five percent or getting closer to it. So let's just make sure all the new ones. But the way it was written is that single family homes and, and twin homes had to get both. And then we had a whole bunch of townhomes come in and just get the black garbage can. And that's kind of.
So we cleaned it all the way up last time.
Yeah, yeah. This is a cleanup of the cleanup.
I remember the garbage ones.
Garbage cleanup.
Right.
Right. Dad jokes are great.
Got it. Okay. If there's no other questions for Chris, I'd entertain a motion on item B.
I move to approve the ordinance amending title thirteen of Spanish Fork Municipal Code regarding curbside cans.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Carden, seconded by Councilman Argyle. Roll call vote. Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
Councilman Euler.
Yes.
Councilman Carden.
Yes.
Councilman Argyle.
Yes.
Item B is approved, takes us to item C, wholesale natural gas pricing lock.
Yeah, thanks, thank you. Yeah, thanks, thank you. All right. So in July of 2020, we made a little bit of change on where we were getting our natural, our natural natural gas. And and basically, we went from Dominion Energy to Summit Energy as a wholesale supplier of natural gas. And this has worked out pretty well for us until December. And at that time, the the rate went from $6.47 in November to $12.13 per MM BTU. So about doubled in December. And then in January, this freeze that was occurring in California spiked the wholesale rate of natural gas up to $50. And our our bill went from, you know, the like, the six to 10,000 range to $90,000 in one month. And so that kind of hurt. So I left those two off of this graph, those two months off of this graph, so that we could look at making a decision here. First of all, Dominion Energy right now is north of $10. So it was a good move. It's much more expensive buying through Dominion Energy. In fact, this isn't all of our cost. We pay about $1, $1.25 for Dominion Energy to deliver this wholesale natural gas for us. But just looking at this, Summit Energy came to us and said, okay, all of our customers that are on this wholesale rate are saying, we want, we can't have our bills spike up that much. And so what we're offering to them is a five-year contract at $7 an MM BTU. And so Seth was talking to me, he says, we need to look at this from, you know, more of a long-term range if we can, say, obviously, Summit Energy is probably locking in with the supplier for, you know, $6.50 and then selling it to us for seven for five years. So that supplier must be banking on over the next five years, the average being lower, and they would make out, they'd make money on the seven. So we're looking at the graphs on that. And and this is as far back as we could get data. But basically, the red line is a trend line of of kind of where natural gas prices have been going, leaving off the last two really big months. If you put those in the trend line, gets a lot more steep. And as we looked at the trend line, we feel like we're already in the $7 range, maybe even headed towards above $8, if you see the red line. In October and November, we were obviously lower than the $7, but not that much. And and if you look at the trends going up, we feel like capping it, basically saying, we'll pay $7 per MM BTU, does a couple of things. One, it's probably going to save us money over the next five years, just looking at that red trend line. But also, it allows us to budget. We didn't budget $90,000 for our gas bill. And so it kind of protects you from, you know, huge swings in the market. So it's our recommendation that that we approve this contract. We hopefully not get another $100,000 bill for the next month. So hopefully we can get this in place. But that's kind of, that's kind of what we're looking at. If if you would like, we can hold off and try to get more data on this. This is all we could get. They came to us last week and we started putting this data together. And so it's a five-year contract. So we kind of understand, you know, maybe we're, maybe we could save some money. But my gut feeling is, if we did, could save some money, it wouldn't be all that much money compared to kind of the risk of of not locking in.
Chris. Said it's a five-year contract. This is saying, or don't say it's locked in until January 2026. Is that correct?
What's that?
So it says the contract would lock in the pricing of 7.35 until January of 2026, which is.
Less than five years, three years? Okay, I thought it was a five. So that that is less risky if you only have three months. But it'll probably go up at that time, I'm guessing. But.
So you're expecting that three years from now will be higher than the 7.35. So we'd be saving money?
That's why, that's why we wanted to graph this trend line. If you if you look at this trend line, that's kind of the average. So right now, we're saying the average is north of $8. And so 7.35 would be, you know, cheaper, quite a bit cheaper. If you if you take the last two months, they're spiking way off the graph here. And so you'd save a lot. But we want to throw them off, them out, and just say, we're trying to look in the future. And if if the future looks like the past, we're following that line. And if we hold it right here at at the 7.35 for three years, we think, we think it would save the city quite a bit of money and and provide some stability and budgeting. But but it's it's a three-year contract, so.
Five-year.
For clarity, this this contract is, this contract delivers natural gas to our sewer treatment plant. That's the only provider, or that's the only place where we use this much. We consume this much natural gas, is what we use to heat the good stuff.
The good stuff. So just a question. So we're five years locked at that?
Three.
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 Oh, okay. I feel better about that.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's quite a bit.
Okay, you said five, but then it's 26. But so what I get, my question was going to be, so one of there becomes where it stabilizes and drops the cost back down.
We're locked at 7.35.
We'd be locked in for that three years.
Okay. Is our new plant comes online, does it more?
Energy.
Yes. Use less gas, do we think?
It is, but this plant will still be used.
Okay.
We still have to heat the good stuff.
Got you.
We, we're going away from the digestion model, so we should use less gas.
Any other questions for Chris on wholesale natural gas pricing lock? Okay, if not, I'd entertain a motion on item C.
Motion to approve wholesale natural gas pricing lock.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Argyle, seconded by Councilman Euler. A roll call vote here. Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
Councilman Euler.
Yes.
Councilman Cardon.
Yes.
Councilman Argyle.
Yes.
And Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
Item C is approved. Takes us to item D, resolution authorizing the airport manager and the public works director to execute hangar ground lease agreements.
Okay, so we already have a resolution that authorizes the airport manager and the public works director to sign these agreements. So this is bringing that to you again with updated agreements. What we're finding is a lot of the hangars that are being constructed at the airport are in the million dollar range. They're very expensive, nice hangars. And in order for someone to get financing to buy a hangar that expensive, the banks need more assurance in the lease. And so a 30-year lease, the banks were kind of saying, this is too much money for us to give you a loan on. But a 50-year lease, they felt like that was, that was good enough. And so this simply changes that lease longevity and it adds the commercial, the the commercial lease agreement to what we can sign, provided that it's following either this exact contract form or the form of the contract that was previously approved in city councils. So say, there's a special lease agreement made, we brought it to city council, they approved it. As long as that same lease came up again without any changes, then the airport manager, public works director could just sign that and doesn't have to come back to the city council. So that's, that's the gist of it. Vaughn, did I leave anything out? It's good. Okay.
Does this lock in the rate that we give the lease for, for 50 years? Or just?
No, it doesn't. It says.
Just the funding, right?
It says that whatever our going rate is, will be charged.
Fifty years is a long time. I assume if it's a business, it's building the hangar and they get a 50-year lease and the owner of that business passes away between, before the 50 years is up, the family no longer wants to deal with it. They can sell that lease to another person and they can take on the remaining years. Is that how it works?
You can always do that, yes. You can always sell this. If you walked away from from the lease, you could take the building with you. But we always own the land underneath the building. So.
I think the reason why you're seeing banks do this, commercial lending, they'll go 20 years. Sometimes they'll stretch it out 25 years, especially when you're talking these multimillion dollar projects like these hangars. So they'll amortize a 20, 25-year note for the borrower there. But then they want to basically double that in case that person sells that or they're, you know, they pass along to their kid. They don't want to go redo that lease. They can already say, hey, that lease is there, it's in place for 50 years, basically, two users of this, that we could amortize this over and not have to worry about updating that lease agreement.
If the banks ever have to foreclose and take over that building, it makes it much more sellable because of the longevity.
They're going to have the lease in place.
Thanks for reading that, by the way.
Okay, any other questions for Chris or Vaughn on this? If not, I'd entertain a motion. Who's our airport guy? Jesse, your airport?
Got it. I move to approve the A resolution authorizing the airport manager and the public works director to execute hangar ground lease agreements.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Cardon, seconded by Councilman Argyle. A roll call vote here. Councilman Cardon.
Yes.
Councilman Euler.
Yes.
Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
And Councilman Argyle.
Yes.
Item D is approved. Takes us to item E, board appointment, Parks and Recreation. Mr. Dale Robinson, or you need to say anything about this? Or do you want me just make the appointment? All right, all right. Well, thanks for sitting here through some meeting to take this, Mr. Landon Took. But we've, we've asked Landon Took to to accept the board appointment to Parks and Recreation. You got a pretty good bio here, Landon, if you want me to read it and we can have the cameras zoom in on you. Yeah? No, come on now. I'll, I'll do it in a English voice or something.
Radio voice.
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, let's hear it. There for the record, start with.
Travis, zoom in real close. No, Landon, thanks for your service. It does go back to high school and and you growing up here and but serving in the Chamber of Commerce and and the city for a long, long time, involved in the, again, I think I've said this publicly about Landon, but it was the guy that when you saw how big he was on the football field, you're like, I'm not stepping on that football field. But then he did kind of have a soft hug after he tackled you on the football field. So.
He pushed you in the ground?
Yeah, yeah, after he pushed, yeah. No, thank you for all your involvement already in the Parks and Parks and Rec program in the city as a whole. We appreciate you. This will be a great, a great fit for you. I know you help us out with fiestas a lot. You're becoming quite the the voice in parades, so you better watch out. I don't know how the pay is on that, but but it's, we appreciate your help there. And and I know Dale and the Parks and Rec Board are excited to welcome you in that role, too. So appreciate your help. Anything you want to say to the citizens of?
I'm excited to serve this new capacity.
All right.
Add some value to an amazing program.
Cool, cool. Good. Well, we're excited to have you there. Thanks. The 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 part of, formal part of this is putting you up there as a nomination for for the board appointments. And that is is my intention to appoint Landon Took to the Parks and Recreation Board. But it needs a motion and a second by the council and a vote in favor if somebody wants to do that.
I move to accept the appointment of Landon Took to the Parks and Recreation Board.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Euler, seconded by Councilwoman Beck. A roll call vote here. Councilman Argyle.
Yes.
Councilman Cardon.
Yes.
Councilman Euler.
Yes.
Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
Perfect. Landon Took on the Parks and Rec Board. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Dale, don't beat him up too bad. Let him in easy. Okay, takes us to item nine, A, a public hearing resolution amending the fiscal year 2023 budget revision number two. Few revisions that happen along the dynamic and moving budget of Spanish Fork, presented by the dynamic and moving Jordan Hales.
If you say so, Mayor. Yep. We were hoping not to have to do this revision. We do a revision in October for projects that we hope to get done in the prior fiscal year. And inevitably, some of them don't get done and we do one in October. And then we hope to do just one final one in June. But we, this one we tried to avoid, but we had some stuff come up. So we're going to do it. All right. So general fund budget summary. So the general fund is our main operating fund. The budget revenues in this are going up 1.7 million. Budget expenses going up around $800,000. So that excess of $900,000, we're sending over to the capital projects fund. So in the general fund, there's a state law that governs how much cash you can have in there. So we're transferring over some funds to the capital project funds. The capital project funds is an area where we can save up to complete bigger projects. I think it's important to note that this isn't slush money or it's money that's very carefully set aside to fund bigger projects such as possibly another fire station or another park, those things that you maybe wouldn't bond for but can cost several million dollars.
Jordan, can you, can you tell us specifically which revenues were increased, 1.7?
Yeah, I can.
Oh, thank you.
These right here. So.
Be specific.
Be specific. I don't know if we ever talk about what all these numbers are. The first three columns in black are prior year actuals. You can see where we've been and where we're kind of headed. The purple column is this year's year-to-date actuals through December. Green column is the current budget we're working with. And the red is the budget that's before you tonight for your vote. And then the difference column is the difference between the current budget and the proposed budget. Yeah, so there's some things I've highlighted that have gone up. Grants have gone up 260,000. Energy sales tax up 250,000. Maybe that's because of natural gas rates, right? I hadn't thought about that. That might be the case. Ambulance revenue is up almost half a million than we expected. This is our first year having paramedics, right? So I think knowing how many calls we're doing and transports, we're getting a fill for that. Interest earnings, you can see a few years ago, just $69,000 in interest earnings. We're looking at $700,000. So that's one good thing, I guess, from the Fed raising rates. So, yeah, we've seen where we were earning, you know, 0.33% on our cash, and now we're earning 4%, you know. Some stuff is over 5%, so a big difference there, which makes, you can see it here. Yeah. But let's highlight some of these. So, yeah, interest earnings way up, ambulance revenue up, building permits and development revenue is decreasing. I'd say that's primarily residential that's decreasing, commercial and industrial, not so much. And then grants, we received and grant community development did by the EPA. So you'll see it an expense on the, for the same amount. So I think that's on a reimbursement basis. So we spend it and then we get reimbursed. All right. Expenses, admin, general government, 141,000. 100,000 of that is for a consultant that's helping us get some grant money. Yeah. Planning, 240,000. That's the EPA grant expense that's gone up. Fire, 56,000 up. Some of our residents and some of you may notice that we have some. Fire, 56,000 dollars up. Some of our residents and some of you may notice that we have some sleeping quarters at Station One, Station 61 here on Main Street, so that we can have people, paramedics staying the night and being able to respond from the station instead of from home. Parks and buildings and grounds, we had a shift in some of our personnel that were classified under parks or under buildings and grounds and now they're going to be under parks. Fairgrounds, 160,000 dollars. Most of that is the parking lot south of the arena. Working on that and some expense also on the announcer stand in the arena. Yeah, and then golf, 66,000 dollars up. One thing that we're doing new year, this year with golf is we're going to do our own in-house food rather than outsourcing that to a third party. So a lot of that is just inventory for food. Yeah, so I mentioned the EPA grant and planning, ambulance, sleeping quarters. Yeah, I think all of that stuff I've mentioned. Any questions on the general fund budget? Okay, awesome. Capital projects fund, so yeah, we talked about that $900,000 being transferred in here from the general fund. Parks capital project fund. We do a, a thing with the impact with developers where they'll put in certain infrastructures such as water, power, but also parks and then they can get reimbursed by impact fees. So that just came in a little higher than we anticipated. All right, sewer plant fund. We have received a couple of grants, one from the county and one from the state. And these are ARPA grants, so these are dealing with the federal government. Yeah, so this will help us not have to bond for so much money when we do our second round of debt to build the sewer plant. And Mapleton is 20% owner of the plant and we'll receive 20% of that, those grants. Yeah, so grants are a very important funding source for city projects. Yeah, and then we expect to be issuing bonds within the next 18 months. Any questions on the sewer plant?
So are we pretty well done receiving grants for the sewer plant or is there the possibility through the years that we could still get more?
Chris, any thoughts there?
We don't have any on our horizon.
But we will always be looking.
If you couldn't hear me, said we don't have any on the horizon, but yeah. All right, power and light, capital expenses decreasing from 10.3 million to 8.9 million. One of the things that's tricky about our fiscal year is it ends in the middle of construction season. It ends on June 30th, so you're trying to anticipate. If you can get it in before June 30th, then it gets difficult. I think we've spent just over 2 million in capital projects so far, so we'll see how that ends. Development, construction material. This is a line item that, correct me if I'm wrong, Chris, this is your cost for new development, right? With the cost of power.
Yeah.
Chris is going to get up and give me a little one-on-one.
So, so what happens is, is developers will have to pay the money for us to get the wire, the, the, the light poles. A lot of the, the materials that's needed to build out a subdivision and development, the transformers and all of that. And then we use that money to buy the supplies. And, and so what we've had is a situation where we've had a lot of development, a lot of, a lot of transformers and wires gone out. But when we've ordered the replacements, sometimes it's taken over a year to get them in. And so this might be money spent that was collected a year ago, if you will, or it might come a lot sooner. So we, we actually just got a bunch of supplies that we didn't think we were getting. So it's kind of a moving target. But over, you know, a five-year period, we'll collect this amount of money and we'll spend it, but you, you spend it in different budget years. And so it's the money that, that developers have given us and then we, we restock with it, basically.
So there is a sister account. So you have an expense account where you're buying this out of and then there's the revenue where you're collecting it. And over time, they will equal each other, but any given year, one can look better or worse than the other. But they are quite volatile due to when development happens. All right, airport fund, capital expenses increasing 1.6 million and that's due to a grant we're receiving. Airport operations are pretty, pretty small. Grants are much larger. When we do, or our capital expenses are much larger. When we do have capital expenses, more, like 93% of that is funded by grants. So we're not putting up a whole lot. Streets and storm drain fund, capital expenses increasing a couple million. Through January, we'd only spent 2.4 million, 4 million on this. Like I mentioned, it's in the fiscal year and it's in the middle of the construction season. Grants decreasing budget from 6.3 million to 4.3 million. So most of our grants are on a reimbursement basis, meaning when you spend the money, then you go and ask for it, so. The 6.3 million, we haven't received any so far this year. So that, we didn't think we'd quite get that in this year, but that's something we'll bill and receive next year. All right, broadband fund, new node construction expense going from 550,000 to 870,000. And then our fiber ring project going from 750,000 to 500,000. So some of that, that we thought we'd be able to get done this year, we're not able to get it done and it'll roll into next year. Revenue's going up 274,000 due to better-than-expected performance. And then the motor pool fund. So the motor pool fund serves internally other divisions of the city. So it buys vehicles and equipment and then rents them or leases them to police and water and sewer. So we thought we'd spend four and a half million dollars on purchases and we're going to spend 5.7 million. And that's because some equipment and vehicles came, became available that we didn't anticipate being able to get till next year.
So if you were to look at this in two years increments, you would say it's going up 1.2 this year because we had the opportunity to buy something. We wouldn't spend 1.5 next year.
Yes, yes. So it's just moving that expense up a year.
All right.
And in this current climate of car purchasing, when the dealer called, when the manufacturer called us and said, I think it was five vehicles that we had the ability to buy, we said, please. Yeah, instead of waiting a year.
Which is the case for a lot of these. Like you're moving money between fiscal years. It looks like we're spending more than we had budgeted for, but really it's we're spending next year's much early because we could or we're moving this year's money for next year's money.
Both of those scenarios are happening. Some moves, some money's getting moved later, some money's coming over.
What's difficult is looking at the budget is you're not seeing last year's budget or next year's budget at the same time. So we, we try to maybe give you some pointers that way to help you see what's happening there. All right, and then we'll get into that next.
All right, moving and dynamic. That's what the budget is. Okay, so item nine A will open up for a public hearing. I'd entertain a motion to hear from the public on.
So moved?
Second? Motion made by Councilman Argyle, seconded by Councilman Carden to go into public hearing. All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
We're in public hearing for the fiscal year 2023 budget revision number two. Anybody from the public that would like to speak to budget revision? Yes.
Hi, I'm wondering if anything in the budget accounts for any adjustments to account for the coachman agreements for the Leland substation with the irrigation, irrigation district or irrigation company drainage district?
Ask that one more time, sorry.
Does the budget, does it account for the encroachments and the bonds for, with the drainage district and the irrigation company?
Good, thank you. Got it.
Thank you. Any other questions from the public? Okay, if not, I'd entertain a motion to go out of public hearing?
So moved?
Second?
Motion made by Councilman Argyle, seconded by Councilwoman Beck to go out of public hearing. All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
We're out of public hearing for item nine A. Question, do we need to research that?
No, the answer is yes.
The answer is what?
Yes.
The answer is yes. Good.
So within that, that substation expenditure, that project?
That's all factored in.
It's all factored, it's all accounted for in, in that piece. Okay. It wouldn't necessarily show up as a line item in here because it's part of a public works.
It's a capital project?
Absolutely. Yeah, and, and it was all factored in to the costs.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for staff, for Jordan, for Chris, for anybody on this resolution?
Just thank you, Jordan, for the prep work that you do to keep us all in the loop and knowing what's going on with the city.
I'll go ahead and.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I think Shane says it, says it well, that the budget is a moving, a moving target, right? What we can get to this year, what you can get to next year, what you think you can do and what you try to do. And, and I think it's, it speaks at least the last budgets that I've looked over since being up here. It speaks to Spanish Fork being fiscally responsible and trying to run lean and mean as far as a city. Because you're trying to do stuff with as few full-time employees as possible. And that means that, hey, this is what our priority is, this is what we can get to. Of course, you could try to blow up the budget and say, we need 100 more people to get these projects done this year. Well, then you'd have those people on forever and that'd be a big expense to the taxpayer. So I think that speaks to some of that movement, right?
And I, I'd give a lot of credit to just all of the employees. There's a lot of hands in the budget. You have assistant division managers, division managers, directors. Seth is our budget manager. There's a lot of different people paying a lot of attention to the budget and they, they take it very seriously. So, yeah, they do good work.
Perfect. That's from a licensed CPA, Jordan Hales. That's, that's good, good eye on stuff. Thank you. Sorry, Councilwoman Beck.
I'll go ahead and move to approve the resolution amending the fiscal year 2023 budget revision number two.
Second? Motion made by Councilwoman Beck, seconded by Councilman Carden. A roll call vote. Councilman Carden?
Yes.
Councilman Euler?
Yes.
Councilman Marshall?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beck?
Yes.
And Councilman Argyle?
Yes.
Item nine A passes, takes us to item number 10, a motion to adjourn to the redevelopment agency.
So moved?
Motion made by Councilman Argyle?
Second?
Seconded by Councilman Euler to adjourn to the redevelopment agency. All in favor, say yeah. Oh, excuse me, roll call vote, sorry. Roll call vote. Councilwoman Beck?
Yes.
Councilman Marshall?
Yes.
Councilman Euler?
Yes.
Councilman Carden?
Yes.
Councilman Argyle?
Yes.
We are in redevelopment agency where we are chair people, not council, board members. We're board members.
Almost got it.
Okay, we're board mess, board members. Am I the chairman? I'm the chairman. Stacy's vice chair would like to be called by that, those titles now for the next two minutes.
Motion to approve consent items?
Motion made by board member Argyle to approve the consent items.
Second?
Seconded by board member Euler. A roll call vote. Board member Carden?
Yes.
Board member Argyle?
Yes.
Board vice, vice chair Beck?
Yes.
Board member Marshall?
Yes.
Board member Euler?
Yes.
The consent items are approved. Is there the budget that we need to go over for the RDA? Same budget guy?
I think the next time you do that, just call them by their last name. Just like Carden, Argyle, Beck. Just, just.
They're board members, but I, but do I get to approve the consent items too?
Vice chair wouldn't allow that to happen.
Chairman votes in the affirmative.
Everyone except the vice chair.
Board members?
Yes.
Chair, vice chair, thank you for giving me a couple of minutes to discuss the RDA budget. Yeah. All right, so RDA budget changes, the Sierra Bonita project area. So within the RDA, we have different project areas. The Sierra Bonita area encompasses young living and the property tax increment generated by that project area. We expected to be 100,000. It's closer to 115,000 dollars. So we're increasing the revenue by 15,000 dollars and also increasing the expense by 15,000 dollars. So this project area functions just as a pass-through, receives the property tax increment and then distributes it. One of the things that the RDA does is it administers the RDA and it can, has a small fee for that administration. So with those administrative funds, we are spending on some legal expenses and some insurance expenses are going up as well. Yeah, and that is the RDA budget changes for this revision.
Perfect. Any questions for Mr. Hales? You have something to say?
I just want to be recognized as the executive director.
Of the RDA, is that right?
Yeah.
Director parents?
Yeah, the admin funds, we're using the admin funds to help do the legal work for the preparation of the new RDA area, the VERC CRA. We've had lots of discussions with, with you individually and with you as a council collectively. But that's where that, those expenses are going in the legal expenses is we're using this to, to create that other RDA fund. That will have that developed, fully developed here in the next couple of months, but that's why that expense is going.
Perfect.
Bless you.
In the RDA, we have a public hearing for this amendment to the fiscal year budget revision number two. I would entertain a motion to go into public hearing for RDA.
So moved?
Second?
Motion made by board member Carden, seconded by board member Argyle. All in favor of going into public hearing, say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, we're in public hearing. Anybody that would like to speak to the RDA budget revision, please come up. Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to go out of public hearing?
So moved?
Second? Motion made by board member Argyle, seconded by board member Carden. All, all in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Yes, we're out of public hearing. And if there's no further questions for the executive director of the RDA or Mr. Jordan Hales, I'd entertain a motion to approve the budget revision number two.
Motion to approve resolution amending the fiscal year 2023 RDA budget revision two.
Second?
Motion made by board member Argyle, seconded by board member Marshall. This is a roll call vote. Board member Euler?
Yes.
Board member Marshall?
Yes.
Vice chair Beck?
Yes.
Chair Mendenhall, yes. Board member Argyle?
Yes.
Board member Euler?
Carden.
Carden? Already got Euler. Board, I looked at the right guy. Board member Carden?
Yes.
He votes in the affirmative. Okay, the RDA budget is approved. Thank you. Okay.
I'm, I move to adjourn to local building authority.
Second?
Motion made by board member Carden, seconded by vice chair Beck to go into the local building authority. All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
We're in local building authority?
Motion to approve consent items?
Are we called the same thing in here? Okay. Motion by board member Argyle to approve the consent items.
Second?
Seconded by board member Euler. Roll call vote. Board member Euler?
Yes.
Board member Carden?
Yes.
Board member Argyle?
Yes.
Chair, vice chair Beck?
Yes.
Shane.
Shane.
Yes.
Board member Shane Marshall. That passes. Consent items are approved. Now to item A, resolution amending the fiscal year 2023 LBA budget revision two.
I promise this is the last budget you have to approve tonight.
Okay.
All right, local building authority. So we have two buildings currently under construction in the LBA. One is just a stone's throw away. Library Hall. So we're increasing the library hall construction expense from 5.9 million to 10.1 million. Increasing interest earnings on cash reserve for construction from $5,000 to $150,000. So yeah, interest is a big one that was happening with this budget. Transferring in $60,000. That's the estimated need to finish library hall. And hopefully we don't need that 60,000, but we're putting it there just in case. Any questions on library hall? And then that should be completed in this fiscal year.
When he says hope about that, we, we have a contingency account and, and with everything in the world, it's getting a little bit closer and closer to the end of the contingency accounts. Our projections show that, that that should get us to the end of the road. Chances are we won't spend it. But it just gives us a little bit of comfort as we get closer to the end of that project.
Jordan, can you walk me through the, the construction expense increase? Jordan, can you walk me through the, the construction expense increase?
I don't know why we only put $6 million there.
Yeah, that's the right answer.
I was wondering that earlier.
Yeah, we, when we were working on the budget this last year, we, or just this last couple of weeks, we don't know why.
It might have been one of those lazy budgeting things where we know we do three revisions and like, oh, we can add whatever it needs to be.
You realized, oh.
Yeah, the money was in the fund, the bond money's there, we just didn't put it from the, yeah, from the fund balance into the, into the project, so.
So it's just sitting there and unallocated.
To be clear, the library did not increase from 6 million to 10 million.
No, I think that's important to note, that the library is not over budget for $1 million, it's, it's on budget.
Slight heart attack from everyone.
My phone's gonna blow up like two seconds.
Yeah, yeah, those are all coming from the bond proceeds that, that were received, you know, a year and a half ago or whatever at the rate that we got.
Yeah.
We can't.
It can get a little messy budgeting over multiple fiscal years because that, that building started two or three fiscal years ago, so.
We blame that on Chris Thompson.
Yeah.
He's not paying attention, so I just.
He heard his name.
Paying attention now?
He hears him.
No, no, heavens, it was my fault. Yeah, that was, that was an error on my part.
And we are hoping for a ribbon cutting in the month of April on that building. Yahoo. We'll, we'll see if we get there.
Yeah, let's go.
We're going.
Let's go.
Let's do it.
There's glass, there's the, 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 the thing is moved out. What's the construction thing? The scissor lift?
Scissor thing.
It's out, it's a thing.
The thing, the thing's moved out.
I was gonna call it a scissor lift.
Not in there now, is it?
It's locked in forever.
Uh, yeah, that floor is all done, the carpet's all the way to it, there are even lights where the thing was, so, yeah.
Super exciting.
Good stuff. Another exciting building.
So Jordan, before you go off of that, sorry to go back to, it's a $4 million number, it's large. And I know that we have, we had planned for 10 million, we're spending 10 million. Can we at some point have sort of the reconciliation of?
21.
It's 21. What did we start with?
21.
All right.
Yeah.
12.
So it's not even, I mean, it's not even 10 million.
Don't do that, don't do that. Yeah, let me pull up the exact number for you.
So we started total, you're talking about total building cost?
Yeah.
21 million, started at that, that's where we're at, so this doesn't change that.
We're hoping not to have to use that $60,000, right? That would put us.
This doesn't change that to 25 million either.
No, no.
Maybe, do the LB, or do the SFCN.
Okay, let's do that. So SFCN building, we issued bonds in May of last year at 12.0, 12.0 million. Yes.
It's just 12. Not in accounting terms.
It's just 12.
Engineering terms, it's just 12.
We are estimating to spend 8 million in this fiscal year. That leaves with $200,000 of interest and $100,000 cost of issuance on that bond money, that puts you at 12.1 million. So you go from 12 down to 11.9, add two, you get to 12.1. So we're gonna spend 8 million this fiscal year. If we don't spend 8 million, it'll sit there in that same fund and then it'll be spent next fiscal year. Yeah.
So just, if we didn't spend 8 million this year, we'd come back in, in June, July and move 8 million or 2 million out of this budget into the next year's budget.
Right.
Like we're doing tonight.
Right.
Just constantly moving across that, that end of year line.
Yeah.
It's a terrible end of year for construction.
For construction, yeah, there's a couple of reasons why it's great, but for construction, it's awful.
Brutal.
Yeah, yeah. If we could change our fund accounting to say accrual or something like that, that may be solved that. It has its own negatives too.
Sure.
Probably the most important thing there is we budgeted 12 million, the money has grown to 12.1 because of interest earnings. And so whether we spend six now and six then, or eight now and four then, or four now and eight then, it's 12, 12.1.
And while it's sitting there, it still can.
Still growing.
Yeah, still growing with 4% and 5% interest rates on cash.
Yeah, there, there are some arbitrage laws that probably will come into effect, maybe not with SFCN. For sure, I'm assuming, we're assuming with the sewer treatment plan.
What were those bond rates at?
3.6, 3.7.
We're, we are definitely earning more than we're paying right now on that cash, which is what Seth referenced as arbitrage, which means there's some federal laws that govern that you can't do that. And any excess earnings, you have to give back.
Give back to who and how?
I, I've not had any experience with it.
Yeah, probably somebody. We've never had to deal with arbitrage.
It's been a little while since we've had.
Raw paper scissors for it.
Because this is not a circumstance that happens very often, right? But when you bond at 1.3.
He's clearly not the executive director of this one, is he?
Tell you what, when we have to deal with it, we will clearly understand.
It is a good problem to have.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, for sure.
So we, like the sewer treatment plan, right, 1.6% interest rate. Now we're ga, we're gaining interest payments in the fours. And that's what the federal government rules on tax exempt bonds is, you can't do that. So we just have to go through the calculus and eventually we'll know what those numbers are and where our limits are. And we'll just take from the interest earnings and rather than putting it into the fund of the construction, we'll just put it over here as an arbitrage payment. That way it doesn't affect us and our project. This one, we shouldn't have an issue with SFCN.
Any questions on the SFCN building?
That's where the cameras turn to on channel 16 now, instead of at the, instead of at the library, so. You're watching it every day, aren't you?
Yes.
Soon you can record it to watch it over and over.
Yeah.
Anywhere in the world.
I watch it to see when it's.
Do you know at my house?
I watch it to see if it's snowing down here, because it shows if it's snowing downtown. It's great.
It's more reliable than those UDOT cameras, you know?
Yeah, yeah, it's great. Channel 16.
Anything you want to add on SFCN or library hall?
Yeah, so this one, the number will be 12 million in terms of the bond. And so back to the library, the total cost is 21.6. 21.6, and that spans four strike, nah, that'll span four fiscal years. FY '20, '21, '23.
I did speak to, you know, if you're a newer resident, I guess, maybe three years or newer, you wouldn't know that that used to be an old church there. But I did speak to a church official over the weekend that talked about, again, thanked, said, hey, this, it looks like a great project, that glad we sold it to you and everything else, but they didn't give it to us. We, the taxpayers bought it.
Yeah.
But I think the timing of that, when we tied it up, probably now four, four years ago.
Yeah, I bet, I bet, I'd have to go look when we did the contract on that, I'd say probably '19. When we bought it, we started working on it in January, I think you gave me the orders in January of '17.
So we're coming up on.
Yeah.
Three, four years, but good timing to buy that property of what maybe Main Street and First South property would go for today versus what we bought it for back then and got a great project started for the, for the city.
So Councilman Marshall, we bonded for the library for 20 million and we, the rest of that is made up just with funds that we had put into the project essentially before the bond. So yeah, 21.6.
So you ended it, we ended at 21.6 and we projected 21.6 roughly?
And 60,000.
All right.
Yeah. But candidly, we were expecting to have a couple hundred thousand dollars probably on the table left from contingency, which has been getting eaten up through some of the glass costs and what other issues, Tyler, have you had there? Glass is probably the latest challenge. Steel, of course, was right from the beginning.
Steel was a time ray.
Yeah. Yeah, despite the times, I think it's coming in about where we estimate.
Anything else, Jordan?
That's the end. Very good.
Okay, any other questions for Jordan or staff on the fiscal year 2023 LBA budget revision number two? We've already done the public hearing, so if there's no other questions, I'd entertain a motion from a board member.
I move to go into public hearing for LBA.
Did we already do it? Did we go into public hearing for LBA?
I think we did.
No, not for this one.
Okay, then I'd entertain a motion to go into a public hearing for LBA budget revision number two.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by board member Carden, seconded by board member Argyle. All in favor of going to public hearing, say yes.
Yes.
We're in public hearing. Anybody from the public that would like to speak to the LBA 2023 budget revision number two, yes?
Alan. My name is Alan Westman, just a average citizen, but just want to say the numbers make sense, especially with the, the explanation of, of the, the difference. And very pleased to see, as a member, as a resident of the city, pleased to see that the projects are coming in right at budget and I think the city is to be commended for that. So just thumbs up for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent. Anybody else? Okay, seeing not entertain a motion to go out of public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by board member Argyle, seconded by board member Beck, your vice chair Beck to go out of public hearing. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
We're out of public hearing. If there's no other questions on this, I would entertain a motion for the LBA budget revision.
So moved. Oh, wow. I move to approve a resolution amending the fiscal year 2023 LBA budget revision two.
Second.
Motion made by board member Carden, seconded by board member Argyle. This is a roll call vote. Vice chair Beck.
Yes.
Board member Marshall.
Yes.
Board member Euler.
Yes.
Board member Carden.
Yes.
Board member Argyle.
Could I be referred to as senior board member?
Senior board member Argyle, yes, you certainly can.
Yes.
And Chairman Mendenhall, yes. That budget revision is approved unanimously. Thank you.
Motion to reconvene back to city council?
Second.
Motion made by board member Argyle, seconded by board member Marshall to go back into city council. Is this a roll call vote too?
Yes.
Okay, board member Carden.
Yes.
Board member Euler.
Yes.
Board member Marshall.
Yes.
Vice chair Beck.
Yes.
And board member, senior board member Argyle.
Yes.
We are back in city council, which takes us to item number 17, 17A, a mixed-use zone discussion. Mr. Dave Anderson?
This should be fun.
Mr. Mayor, council, thank you for your time tonight. We're gonna talk about a site that is on the northeast corner of 400 North and Spanish Fork Parkway, sort of the northeast of Maple Mountain High School. And I, I'm gonna let Corey Anderson, who's in the back row in just a minute, take over and run with things. He's the applicant on a project that we've been talking about since last May. And in addition to appreciating your time tonight, I want to thank the planning commission. They have discussed this at least four times, actually, I think five times, over the course of the past many months as the project has gone through different iterations as a concept. And their devotion, I think, is commendable. They haven't complained about seeing it multiple times. They simply have, have, I think, been genuine in providing comments for the applicant, and I'll touch more on that in a minute. But we're here tonight partly because we've had conversations with the planning commission several times. We've had planning, excuse me, we've had conversations with the development review committee. I spoke with a few of you about the proposal. Councilman Carden remembers, I'm sure, at least a few of the times that it went before the planning commission back when he was a commissioner. And those conversations have led to, I think, some really positive evolution that's happened with the design. We have clearly been able to identify some really distinct opinions about what should happen. And I'd say maybe about what should be required, and also we've been able to identify some, some common threads. You'll see this in a minute, but the proposal's complex from at least the city's perspective in terms of land use regulation as proposed. It would require a zoning map amendment, in my opinion. Also, the best way to approach it would be for some zoning text changes. In fact, we've put together a draft of what, this tenant of these is called the mixed-use zone, that could replace another zoning district that we have on the books now, that really is intended to facilitate this project. It's kind of the test case and other projects like it. There are market issues. Mentioned mixed use, when you start to put residential and non-residential uses cohabitating in either the same project or in the same building and different things like that, that's a little bit out of the norm for what the different industries that are involved in are used to in our part of the world. Lenders, as well as developers, builders, tenants and different things like that. Again, I'd say is a little bit out of the norm. There are some land ownership issues. We're talking about properties that currently are owned by different people. There's some things that make it a little bit more complicated than what oftentimes we're here to, here to discuss. Back to some common threads. I believe, just based on what I've heard from the planning commission, that as a whole, they like the concept that we'll show you here in a minute. And yet, there's one particular part of it, it's a, it's a portion of the layout that's set aside for a grocery store. Something that might be a little bit smaller than Macy's, maybe a little bit bigger than a neighborhood Walmart, the neighborhood Walmart in town. And I also would say that as a whole, the planning commission feels like that's a really essential part of the project, which is one of the things that we want to discuss with you tonight. Some people dislike the idea of having any residential use on the site. Might say that they prefer just to abandon the whole concept of mixed use and just have it simply developed as it's currently zoned. The majority of the site is zoned commercial too today. And lastly, rather than having residential and non-residential uses mixed as part of one project, we've heard people say that they might, they might prefer to see a project designed more like the neighborhood Walmart, where the neighborhood Walmart and the adjacent residential use are very distinct. There's in fact a wall between the two. There's a very hard line between those two different uses. So that being said, I, along with your time tonight and the planning commissions, I really appreciate the effort that the applicants put into consistently addressing the concerns that have come up as we've talked in different forums about the proposal. I absolutely believe that he's made a good faith effort to try to resolve the different issues that we've raised. At this point, they have a design that I understand, UDOT approves of in terms of access from 400 North. We've got logical access points, I think, that our staff is comfortable with from Spanish Fork Parkway. And generally speaking, a design that is functional, that could function. But that being said, one of the big questions does have to do with part of the site that you'll see again here in a minute, where right now we've tentatively, I say we, I shouldn't say that, where the applicant has designed space for a grocery store. I think we've learned over the years and I certainly believe strongly that you can't force something like that to happen. And going back to what I mentioned earlier about the planning commission, and I don't in any way mean to put words in their mouths, but I, I think they're ready to support the project if there's some commitment that the grocery store is a part of the, part of the project. And even if somebody was fully committed today to make that happen, those plans can evaporate very quickly. So some thought needs to be given to what ifs. You know, what if land is set aside today for a grocery store, but it never comes to fruition? Are the other aspects of the project still worth pursuing? What if that doesn't happen, then what may be a plan B for that space? Most of all tonight, we just want you to listen to Mr. Corey Anderson and the proposal that he's put before us. And give us your thoughts, just as openly and genuinely as you can. Not looking for anybody to tell us how you're gonna vote on what would be some legislative acts that would have to take place for this to, to be able to happen, but just looking for a robust discussion, get your candid thoughts. to be able to happen, but just looking for a robust discussion, get your candid thoughts so that we can go from there. So maybe with that, unless you have any questions of me, I'll let Corey take over.
Perfect. Yep. Thank you, Dave. We'll come back to you with any questions. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Dave.
Did you get bit by a bear, Mr. Anderson? What's the deal?
These two innocent-looking ladies jumped me. Just kidding. The doctor said if he does this, my thumb will work again. So I said, okay, let's do it. So that's it.
I'll tear your name for the record.
Oh, Corey Anderson. Brief history. We bought, this is, is there a pointer on this?
In the middle?
Reddish button.
Right above the left, right buttons.
There you go.
We bought eleven acres roughly right here, this dividing line, about a year ago, actually. February of last year is when we bought this eleven acres. This is a separate piece right now. When we bought this, it was with the intent of keeping it in the C2 zone and kind of doing something like this all along the parkway. Not sure how or how we got to the point where, I don't know if it was the city or Dave or somebody asked us to look at facilitating a grocery store in this area. So we looked at it, and in doing so, we would need to get the remaining three and a half acres that we didn't currently own, and we still don't own, under contract. And we've done that. And through many, we started with Concept A, and I think we're on Concept BB now. This is what we have currently before you. It's, like Dave said, it's a mixed use. With the anchor being this grocery store on the west corner of that.
Corey, will you show us what, where's fourth north on this?
Right here.
Shane might need you to zoom out quite a bit.
Railroad tracks around the east side.
Yeah, these are the railroad tracks. This is Mapleton right here, the light that takes you to Maple Mountain. What we, a big part of my development business, we have these. We do these stacked condos, and we've done, you know, four hundred of these from Orem to St. George right now. And we feel good about these. We like these. We know what we're doing with these. But again, when we bought this, this was not our intent to do this. Our intent was to do a commercial. In acquiring or putting this piece under contract and doing this, we felt like this would actually be a really good mix, to bring some of these condos into this and have a good mixed-use project. As Dave mentioned, you know, we've went back to the Planning Commission many times, mostly on architectural stuff with our condos. Our current plan was to basically just, it's a subdivision, where this would be lot one, lot two, lot three, lot four, lot five, lot six, and then lot seven is the condos. Our plan would be to sell off these lots. This is just a concept as to what could be built here, with the understanding that, you know, somebody comes in here and, for instance, a Chick-fil-A, which would probably never come here, but if a Chick-fil-A came in here, they would probably want their building, you know? So this is, this is a 10,000-square-foot building that we have laid out here that could be broken up into 2,000 or 2,500 square foot.
So that's all commercial there?
This is all commercial, yes. This is one of the popular drive-throughs that are going through. We wanted to lay something out for that. We think that would be a good mix. This is, with UDOT, they would like a roundabout right through here, right in, right out. The only thing, as far as construction-wise goes, that we would, we know for sure we would have control over is this layout of our condos. We do have an interested party in this lot, which would be a mixed use, which would be somewhat commercial on the main, two stories of apartments on top of that. I don't know if you know where, a project we're doing in Springville right now, was the old, it was the old Nebo school.
Westside School.
Yeah, that's a project that we're doing right now. And out front there on the main street, there's a kind of a version of something like this, where there's, right now, there's a furniture store, a design center, office, and then some apartments above. I think it looks really inviting, and I think it looks and functions really well. The big question, well, and this whole time, we have been working with a grocery store that would occupy this. The, as of 10:30 this morning, they have pulled out. So we have no leads or anybody that, I mean, we'll get back in the hunt there. But as what Dave was talking about, the question, and I guess direction that I would like to get from you guys tonight is, do we scrap this whole idea and go back to this project with, oh, that was me? Scrap this whole idea, just go back to this eleven acres, put these out front, and we'll let the business or the owner of this one develop his three acres? The scary thing to me financially is if we are forced to not build our condos and sit on these until we have a grocery store move in there, I don't know if we can sustain that. I mean, you looked at your budget and what interest is doing. I mean, we feel the same effects. It's went from four or five percent when we bought this to nine and a half percent. It's starting to get expensive to hold ground. And financially, I don't know if we could. If we had to sit on this for three years, who knows what the future is going to bring. And even if we do have a buyer for this lot, and they come in and buy it, but they decide to wait on it. For instance, we've spoke to Harman's. Their plan is 10 years out. And that's just where they would fit in their build-out. So every grocery store is going to be different. So there's definitely some uncertainties this, and it's such a big hitter in this project. And I get the city's standpoint that, you know, we want to know that there's a grocery store coming in there, and I understand that.
Are you, sorry, are you at liberty to say why the grocery store this morning decided to pull out?
I don't know that answer. It was a private meeting, and I'm not sure if she would want me to say that. I do know that down the street in Mapleton, there is a piece of ground that is bought by a competitive grocery store that I'm sure weighed heavily into that decision. But I don't know that for certain. And that also kind of makes me a little nervous, that if they do come in there and we have a pad sitting here less than a mile away from another grocery store, what's that going to do to this pad? So there is some uncertainty on, definitely on our side of this project. I don't, I guess the big question that I have is, would, if we were to move forward with this, and we had to sit on this for a couple of years, are you going to stop us from actually building this out? I know you wouldn't stop us from building this out, and that's, I'm not too worried about these being built on, just because I think that street, what's going on there can facilitate that. I think that businesses can come in here. We do have an interested party in this pad already. We got somebody looking at this pad. We have a couple of users interested in this. So I think that these will move, and again, that kind of takes it out of our hands as to when they actually start construction on that. But that's, that's not as big of a concern with these as it's with this, because that's a 20 to $25 million build-out, that that's not a, you know, this is still, jeez Louise, this is still an expensive build-out, but, you know, compared to a grocery store, it's not nearly as large. So I guess the, do you want to look at more of what we've got going on here?
While you've got that map up, maybe I can ask a question to Dave or to you. This obviously is a new concept. We don't have this anywhere in Spanish Fork, where you've got kind of a residential-commercial mix like this. Which of these streets would be the public streets that the city would maintain? Which, what would we plow? Obviously, I mean, I don't think right now, if you look at Macy's or Walmart, you know, our plows aren't going right in front of their stores. And so I'm assuming that if this is a public street at that point, then we would be, would be plowing those. Is that right?
How we're currently laying it out, this is all private.
That's all private?
Yeah, so city plows would not enter into sight.
Are there any public streets, even those up in the residential area?
Nope.
None of it's public?
Kind.
Current zoning is C2 and what is that top piece?
R3.
R3.
So Corey, to sort of boil this down a little bit, you entered this looking to develop this front piece?
Yep.
Your question today is, you're willing to move forward on this, as you were planning to do? If we said, we want, we want a grocery store here, and we can't let you build these condos until it comes in, you're like, nope, I'm out?
I think financially, it forces out.
Would make a sense. That would make sense to me. So our options would be, you go forward with what you're planning, or you go forward with your planning and the condos, and we wait a bit. That makes it financially viable for you, if you can build the condos and wait.
Having, geez Louise, having us being able to do this, it'll help on the carrying cost of this, for sure. I mean, just the pure economics of it. But to sit and wait on.
It's too much to care.
This, yeah. We just financially would not be able to do it.
But if there was a line here, you're saying you could build, you would not, you would not build these in front of here, you'd kind of stop right here and build all of this?
Yeah, I think we'd still move forward with our original plan, which is, as far as infrastructure would be, we would improve this, put the utilities in and out to parkway, still have a driveway that would come through here, and then divide these lots. So we wouldn't put, of course, we wouldn't put this parking lot in, because that would be part of this, but there would be a drive-through that would still come in out. We were not going to, we'd never planned on phasing this infrastructure. It's, we're going to do it all in one and have this pad ready to go. But that dividing line would, yes. There were, so from about right here, this would all be paved and including this lot. And over to probably here, because we'd want this access to come in and tie into this so they can have access into the rest of the project, this would all be vacant, waiting for a pad or a grocery store.
Is your middle one, is this residential or is this commercial?
That's the mixed use, where it'd be commercial on the main, residential on top.
And is that the only one that's mixed use?
Yes, as far as in the same building.
Okay.
But you still don't own these three acres?
Correct. We have them under contract.
You do have it under contract?
Yes, yeah.
That's only three acres, that whole top piece?
3.36, I believe. Yeah, the whole site's 11. We own 11 acres roughly through here somewhere.
You'd need zone, you'd need zone changes from what it currently is. This could currently be built with the zone that's there now.
Correct.
You need zone changes to do this.
And I think this would work. I think I've said that. I think that is a viable plan. It's a good, and I think it would be a good project. That doesn't scare me.
Dave, wouldn't this be a whole new zoning district?
That's exactly what we've talked about, and I think that's the best way to do it. That's mine. But I think in terms of what you can do by right today, frankly, even without coming to a Planning Commission or City Council meeting, if Corey wanted to just develop the property that's on C2 with exclusively residential and office uses, that's just site plan approval, straightforward.
This piece, right?
One thing that I want to mention, I'm not trying to lobby one way or another, but if Corey just develops the 11 acres that he has purchased, then we end up with a remnant piece that was never intended to stand alone. When the townhomes were developed, the idea was that the density there was going to be consolidated to the north. Because when the property was annexed, we did not require enough of, it was owned by the minor family at the time, them to set aside enough depth of property going from the south to the north or vice versa, just enough space to be able to fit this in. So when the townhomes were proposed, we realized it at that point. We worked with Salisbury Homes to get them to reserve another 100 or so feet of space there. So now there is a 100 or so-foot wide-long piece of property that runs from Spanish Fork Parkway over to the railroad tracks that is what Corey has under contract. And what makes this conceivably work, without this, you wouldn't have the depth to be able to have a parking field that would make a 50,000 or so-square-foot grocery store work. If another plan's pursued, then that becomes a pretty difficult piece of property to put to some kind of beneficial use. So that's another little wrinkle.
So let me ask you, if we do set aside this portion, then, as you move forward on this, and it gets determined that, yeah, there's a grocery store right across the railroad tracks, right? And so it doesn't make sense. You're never going to be able to develop this. How difficult would it be to retrofit and throw or put some more commercial, smaller commercial buildings in these two areas? My concern is that 10 years down the road, because it never got developed, somebody's going to come along and say, well, let's just put houses here.
Yeah. That's probably more of a Dave question, but it probably wouldn't be hard at all as far as, you know, redeveloping, rezoning this to allow that. That being said, you know, I've seen market studies that actually are taking into account both, and both are still flourishing with that competition being so close to each other. My opinion, and I might be biased, but this location is by far better than the one that they have slotted for in Mapleton. And just the traffic and with you guys putting this parkway in, that connecting all the way down there, I just think this is by far a better site for a grocery store. Now, back to your initial question, as far as how we're doing the infrastructure, I think it would be really easy to adjust that. That being said, I've never, I haven't looked into that, because that's never really been an option. It's always been, leave it as a big box pad or a grocery store pad. But I mean, you look at this, I mean, for instance, there's a lot right, you have this coming in right there. You do another lot right there. You could have a commercial, commercial, put one right here, commercial pad, commercial pad. Or just make this in one big one. This is going to be a little bit bigger commercial pad over here.
So it's not like we're tied, the city's tied, to having to put a big box or a grocery store if years down the road, we're like, this just doesn't work?
Well, my question is the other way. Is, could we zone this in a way, Dave, or is it a master plan development? That if this whole development went in and this was preserved for the grocery store, that doesn't happen, would the applicant have to come in front of us or Planning Commission or DRC or whatever to say, okay, well, this is on commercial? We gave it the old college try for a grocery store, but we're going to stack these here instead? Without our approval, or can we? Or can we put parameters on that that that, just because it's zone commercial already, still needs to, we need to see, I guess, vet that a little bit? Have we taken the whole route of trying to get a grocery store here?
I think there are a lot of options that are on the table now, for sure. This could get approved in such a way that, uh, just as one example, that no development happens here unless, you know, something very similar to this layout is followed. I think by agreement, contract, you could tie a developer, property owner's hands tightly in that fashion. Likewise, you could say that none of this happens. This is back to the point that Corey's made several times and what the planning commissioners talked about. This doesn't happen until that happens. So there could be some sequential provisions written into a contract that, that prohibit a certain construction in the project until other triggers have, have been hit. You said something a second ago, I can't remember exactly how you phrased it, but you asked, um, what could or could not happen? And I think that's really why we're here tonight, is to get some sense of how strongly you feel about different things. Because ultimately, you're going to tell us what can or can't happen and what order things can or can't happen in, and that type of a thing. Maybe one last comment from me for now. This is a scenario. It might be worth looking at a couple of scenarios. You know, this might be a five-year plan, might be a ten-year plan. Uh, but maybe having Mr. Anderson show what this might look like as a plan B? You know, should this not happen? Nobody has a crystal ball that gives us a ton of guidance here, but I strongly believe that this kind of space, because it is so flexible and can accommodate hundreds of different tenants.
Right.
This will be more viable in the marketplace, um, than this over time. You know, much easier to, to kind of count on this being just a reliable commodity than this. So, you know, maybe again, like Corey described, uh, ten thousand square foot retail buildings compared to a grocery store and the like. So, you know, maybe that's worth considering just as a, as a path forward. Scenario A, B.
You, you'd have to talk about what are the triggers that would push it from this to more of this? From a grocery store to more of the ten thousand square foot?
In, in my opinion, that would need probably to be time.
At what point, when do we give up and say a grocery store is not viable there?
I think that was one of the major concerns when this came for our planning commission before was that we didn't move the condos over to where the big box store was going to be, right? That we focused it around the commercial kind of enveloping it. And that was one of the big concessions, uh, conversations when Corey came in the first time.
And, and now the worry is a little bit legitimate that that could just happen. And then you don't have the property tied up here that would ever make a grocery store possible, right? And so now you got kind of wonky area.
Yeah, but yeah, to Dave's point too is, then if we, because if Corey goes forward with just this front area, then you have this weird piece of land that becomes really, really hard to develop.
It's never, yeah, a possibility.
For sure.
So Dave, was it discussed or talked about with that little strip that's R three of talking to the property owners there and just rezoning and bringing that in as a commercial too, and making the whole strip commercial too?
Yeah, I think that should happen. That should happen, in my opinion. And at least casually and formally, we've let that property owner know. And that's, that's frankly what they signed on for when the townhomes were there.
I, I would probably even suggest that did happen, although it maybe didn't. It should have, it absolutely is a part of the discussions when, uh, pull that map up, when. It's my, it's my recollection that, that we moved the C two all the way to the northern border of that strip to the north. But I don't know if Dave, you've gone back and looked at the minutes for that. But it was absolutely and clearly part of the discussions. The, the townhome project to the north was going to be to that, that, yeah, we have to here.
The line basically.
Orange.
Was going to be to this line here, and they didn't lose any d- density in this project. I'm gonna make up the number, but let's say there's a hundred and fifty townhomes in this area right here. And there were a hundred and fifty townhomes in all of that area, and when this line moved from here to there, they didn't lose any townhomes. So the value of their project wasn't lost. And so you, as a council, gave a significant concession to them in saying you can do that same project on less acreage and still have this remnant parcel. So frankly, in, in my opinion, which matters nothing here, that line should be given to Corey.
You're the executive director of the LBA.
Not of his, not of the, not of his business, nor of the business that's selling the land, right? But, but this land i- i- in essence should have even no value, right? Because they were able to take all of the value and move it to their place. And of course, that's not the case, and I'm sure Corey's paying more than a dollar for that piece of ground. But that was clearly contemplated when the council made the decision to adjust this boundary from here to there, probably five, four or five years ago, maybe three or four years ago, I guess, with that project. So this, this C two line should be there. And if we could go back in time, I would have said, and let's, let's make that all one one parcel, which we couldn't do because it was owned by different people, but.
What frustration.
That would have been part of the discussions and negotiations I'd have had, I'd have suggested back then. Knowing that it, over time, landowners change. And I think that's one thing that we have to prepare for and plan for here. Corey has been great, very patient and thoughtful and, and providing great insights and, and, and responding to, to comments from staff as well as from planning commissioners. But I think we also need to plan that in five or 10 years, what if he's not involved, right? What if he sells out? Because the timeline is too long for him, and it certainly wouldn't be on, be beyond, I think, the scope of, of, of possibilities for, for him not to be there. So how do we, how do we deal with a different landowner? And of course, development agreements are good, but anybody can come back five years later and say, well, we had to buy this for more, we can't afford it. So to Kevin's concern, we can't make a grocery store work. We want more houses. We want more townhomes. And that, at the moment, and, and thinking of the larger, the larger Legacy Farms project that is kind of this whole east, northeastern quadrant, there was some seven hundred and fifty homes contemplated over all this. Some of that got squished out of the school property, and then some of that got squished out of this church property, and then some of that got squished out of here, and, and that seven hundred and fifty acres spread over four hundred and fifty, seven hundred and fifty units spread over four acres, got three seventy-five, three fifty, right? You just get more and more dense. But that's what happens when projects sell and new developers come in, and they don't have the same vision that Corey has. So I think you need to be prepared for that.
But, but through all of that, the vision has always been C two there, and we've held firm to that. Now it's time to be like, are we gonna hold firm? Are we gonna be there or not? What, what is driving the want, the desire for a grocery store and not ten thousand square foot commercial?
People need this. All I said for myself. There are very few locations in town where you have any hope. There are very few locations in Spanish Fork where there's any hope of having somebody invest to build and operate a grocery store. I've been told by more than one commercial broker that this is one of those locations where conceivably, just because of traffic counts and a lot of other things about the area, it could happen here. Again, no guarantee, but, um, that's why this has kind of had a bullseye on it.
Sure. So the, the thought is, we need another one. Spanish Fork could use another one. Makes sense to have one, and this is what's left.
And so can Mapleton. Mapleton can use one.
Sure.
And so, I mean, that's really how the market looks at it, right?
Yeah, for sure. They're not, the market isn't saying this, no one from this property.
They're gonna, they're gonna charge them double.
I'm okay with that. Just sales tax double, not the actual cost of the.
And Councilman Marshall, I would say it's not what's left, it's what's preserved, right? Through the zoning, through that general pla- plan process, we've identified the intersection of Spanish Fork Parkway and Fort North as the place. And, and if you didn't have that preserved in your general plan 10 years ago, you would have houses there already. Uh, I, I think because of what's happened in the area and what was planned for. So it's, it's not necessarily just what's left, but what, what you've preserved through your process, yeah.
Previous council. Well, it's not lost that you got, I mean, nine months out of the year, you got a high school right here that's going somewhere.
Be nice for them to go closer.
Yeah.
Right now, we send them across Highway six, right?
You go back.
All you three would shop there, right?
No, I'm driving off Spanish Fork Parkway.
That's true.
We'll build that road for me.
We only shop at Macy's.
Kevin's bagging groceries.
I live across the railroad tracks over in Mapleton, and, I mean, selfishly, it's like, whatever I can put in here so I doesn't, don't have to go to Macy's. I'm all for it.
And we want that. That, this concept of neighborhood grocery, this concept of neighborhood commercial is proven over and over again throughout the world, right? We're experiencing it with the neighborhood Walmart. It, it's happening, and the, the trips that he doesn't have to make downtown, the trips that I don't have to make downtown, make Main Street better, make Tenth North better. So this is, this is a very good community building concept in terms of having the commercial. Getting back to maybe the original question that Corey has and that, that Dave has is, do you want to see houses inside of that space? Do you want to see whatever that is, right? He's proposing condos and, and what that, that looks like here. But do you want to see condos in addition to that, that commercial space?
The draw for me of having the condos in that close of a commercial space is knowing that people that live there wouldn't have to jump in their car to go grocery shopping. That's a big draw. If the grocery shopping's.
You know they're not hauling that ass.
You bet they are. They'll, they'll take the grocery cart all the way to their front door.
On those private.
And leave it there.
No, they're.
They're gonna be, they're jumping.
Yes, they are. Oh, my gosh.
Car spots, grocery.
You look at your church parking lot on Sunday, who drove?
I drove.
Yeah, how close?
People the closest.
Hundred feet.
So they're gonna, but it's internal, I mean, to your, to the main point, it is internal, but they're driving.
But we're not the ones that can determine if Spanish Fork can handle a grocery store and Mapleton? Or are, is that your job to determine that?
Well, I think that, I think at the end of the day, it's gonna be the grocery store owner.
That's what I'm thinking. If someone just pulled out this morning because someone else in Mapleton's building, and they're a little fearful, right?
Well, and again, that, that, there was many reasons.
Okay, but that's.
That is definitely one that they were considering, and, and the price tag to build this building. Now, the, the, the individuals that I was working with was an owner of one grocery store. So, you know, you have, you have a chain of these that have deeper pockets, that might be different. We have not, we have stopped, um, conversations with them. We've, we've been and worked before with, we were working with this one grocery store. And our plan is to go back to them and start pitching this and letting them know that this is back on the market. That being said, I think we're still going to come in, the, the, the question that we're putting forth to you guys today is this, is really the same question. Look, for instance, a Harman's, we, we deal with Harman's. They say, yes, we want to buy this. They're 10 years out, just because of their business model. So I sell them this piece of property, but yet I still have to sit on this until they make up their mind to come and do that. That's the question that I think we're bringing forth to you is, will you bind me to something like that? And if so, we gotta make some decisions on how that's going to look.
Question I have then is the reason why you're not doing all commercial, and you are
I'm trying.
Trying to get some residential in there. I assume it's just money, right? You can get more money from the residential that then can help fund.
Well, we're, we're definitely, we are definitely more familiar with these because we've built 500 of them. We know what we're doing here, and this is, is a great fit, um, for a project like this because they are going to walk over here to Cafe Rio and eat. They're gonna walk down here, they're gonna walk over to Starbucks or Beans and Brews and in the morning and do that. It's a great fit for a project just like this. And the placement of these, I can get into what we do different with our condos, but the placement of these along a railroad track and against multifamily, it's a great fit for our, our product here. And, um, couple that with a grocery store and, and commercial uses, it's just, they're never gonna leave there. They don't, they won't have to leave there. So I think it's, I think it, overall, it just makes that project, um, a really great project for my multi-use, uh, multi-tenant, multi-use feel.
Are you familiar with neighboring communities anywhere in Utah County or close that has anything similar to this?
Uh, the only one that, the one that comes to mind is actually the one up here by the small mart. I mean, you look at, you look at what Utah or, you know, University Mall is doing. I mean, they are, you, you, you sit down with them, and it's 25% 25% commercial. The rest, they're doing residential, and that is flourishing down there. And it's, that's just taken off for the commercial areas because of, I think, because of those residential uses. I think they've tried to do some of these in, um, in Orem Midtown, which I think flopped. But that was back in '08, so who knows why that flopped? But, um, nothing's really come into mind per se. But I do know.
I think Daybreak has got something that's close to this, right? There's, there are places that, yeah, that have commercial next to residential. And I think, I think the Walmart, the neighborhood Walmart is really close, with the exception, there's a fence there instead of a road out front. I mean, but in essence, it's, it's, it's the same thing. You know, we, I'll get an email every once in a while that says, we need to make our community more walkable. Right? We've all gotten those.
We just got one the other day, right?
Right, and it, and it, we hear that all the time. That's what this does. That's exactly what we're, this does.
You almost have three distinct sections of it, right? You have the residential, you have the commercial, and then you have this mixed, right? So there's a lot of ways that we can make it work or pencil.
How do you do the mixed in the middle when it comes to parking, when you've got, gotta designate a certain amount of commercial parking along with residential parking?
Well, this layout right here actually meets, um, it's, I think the parking requirements were one per every 300 square feet and two and a half per apartments, and this fits all of that.
So you just add the two requirements together to make sure it's got.
Yeah, and, and it's probably overparked. I actually own the building down there in Springville that has the, the design center and the furniture store and the apartments on top. And the, the mix, when people are coming to work at nine o'clock, the residents that live there are leaving. Um, and so it's a, it, it works.
Do the residents get a designated or assigned parking?
No, and, and, and it's very similar to this, um, what we've done over there is there's a cross easement. So parking, they can cross, they can park in the residential, which we do here as well. This is gonna be a cross easement for parking along the whole project. So parking, and we're so overparked on that, in that project. And I think we forwarded you the parking audit that we did over there. But that would meet the parking requirements on this one. And the, and, and probably the uses in, in a building like this are gonna be more like one that's looking at buying a quarter of the commercial is an accountant. Like, he wants to put his office there, he wants to buy a couple of, of apartments on top of it, so he's gonna own the apartments, and then it's gonna office out of the basement. So then they'd be condos where they would, they, the professional or, they're not gonna probably be a grocery store or not a grocery store, but a, an eatery, but it's gonna be more professional use type, which works really great in our Springville project. But then you have that coupled with, you know, the park, the residents that live there, they have the park, have access to all the, the amenities from the residential. I think it would, it'll flow really well.
So I, I'm just gonna express, my concerns haven't changed any really, Dave. The concept of having what they said walkable or whatever with our neighborhood Walmart has turned out with the housing, and then now you have some businesses built out that are food services. with the housing and then now you have some businesses built out that are food services. And this right here, the, this, and urban development's what I, the only thing I can think, because it's commercial on the bottom. I, it'll end up being services. My opinion of that is I've watched that happen over the, in Utah, that those Riverwoods still has buildings in the bottom that I don't have businesses in. Murray built a great big one. The businesses are not filled out. The one in Provo where Reams used to be there, the businesses there are very few businesses, hoping to have services that's going to serve these residential. And they end up not. I know we can't fix that, we can't do that, but that's the part about the, this urban part where we put business and then put the residential over it. These commercials, when you talk about what goes there, but you don't have no control over them, that they end up being, well, this could be very much a Starbucks, I guess, but any, any of those, those could be a taco shop or something like that. And if this doesn't happen, then this just turns out to me to just be a subdivision with commercial lots in it. Not, the thing that I think we're trying to say is, the people that are living here can walk to these businesses, they don't have to drive downtown. And that's not going to be accomplished if that store doesn't come to fruition.
That is the question.
That is the question. And we'd have to do a whole new zone, right?
I think that's best.
Best, to make this look like it was, was.
And I think the, the difference.
The thing with neighborhood Walmart too, is there is a definite separation from the business and the resident. I don't know if that's good or bad. I kind of think the, I wish there was even a walkable route to the east of that, that they could walk out of that if there wasn't even a roadway. There's not. But, because that's pretty contained and I don't want to see that be so contained. But my worry is that, love to have the grocery store, and I guess that's our biggest hangup, is if the grocery store don't happen, then what happens to that piece of ground? One, two, three down the, you come back and say, I can't do this. I want residential or commercial, either one. And, and I think we've reserved that whole thing for that purpose though, for it to be commercial. Was, I mean, that's, was our whole entire purpose, was it to be commercial, to serve the area that's on our east end of town. And, so I'm still struggling with the residential there.
Well, I'd like to point out that, for instance, this building is 7,000 square feet of, of office space, right there. That will be condo, that will be hopefully private ownership that are going to occupy their own, their own spaces. So leasing them out, I get your concern there, when, on a large, on a large scale, but where this is going to be sold to private ownership, I think that's, that'll take care of that concern. The last time I came to the planning commission, the one thing they wanted to see was the walkability of this whole project. And, and that's what, you know, these crossings and everything is to make, to ensure that there is walkability from this to here. And, and that's what we've, you know, kind of put in play. And there's another slide that shows the, the walkability of all that to ensure that, you know, that this is a project that these people that live right there have a safe route to get to the grocery store. And I want you to know, you know, I, I think that, I'm looking at this as, as a, as a partnership with the city. You know, we, the, the, the sales price that we had for this, we were losing money on getting this grocery store in here, because I think it's, it's viable for the city, I think it's viable for this neighborhood, and I think it'll work. And I think it'll help our project for sure. But we are taking a loss in doing that. And, and I think that's, that's something that we want to, to be the good neighbors and, and help facilitate and have a great project, including a grocery store. That's our intent to do this. I, it's, I hope you feel that I'm not trying to pull a fast one on you, this is what we're going to do, and then come back in four years and say, fooled you. Now we want to do, do another 16 plaques.
Because I, that, like I said, the concept, and I, and I think about the project that you did over where the school is though, some services there would have been really great for that community, which didn't happen or doesn't, isn't happening.
Yeah.
Where they didn't have to, because as Springville is built out, their, those businesses are down by the freeway now, so they're, they're a ways away from those many residents.
And that's why I think these uses are going to benefit more from the condos being in than the grocery store. The grocery store needs a lot more people's rooftops than 90. But I think these are what are going to benefit from these 90 condos being in here, because this is where they're going to go eat. This is where they're going to go work out or, you know, whatever the uses are going to be. They'll benefit from these much more than, like if these weren't here, it's not like they're going to go away because we don't have 90 condos. You know, it's the neighboring three mile radius, the reason they're going to put a grocery store right there.
As big as the neighborhood Walmart has, maybe we could use a second neighborhood Walmart. Because I think.
Can't say that out loud.
You men, you mentioned that in this one, you may have an accountant or someone. Have you talked to, or do you have anybody as far as eateries or other commercial that are, that are looking at these other buildings that you've got?
Yeah, we have. We've talked to many restaurant owners that are very interested, really interested in moving down here and, and doing another one.
So the grocery store could be difficult, but do you feel like these would be pretty easy to fill?
Yes. And I think, again, you know, that's part B of this plan, is we, we forego this and we do these out front. I don't, I don't think that's a concern for me. I still think they're going to be successful.
Your residential project, for sale, for rent, or a mix, or what?
So what, how we do our, our condos is they are, we sell them individually. The, what we do is we go get, they're FHA approved to where people can come in, put a down payment in. They're, we sell them to end users. Out of the 500 we built, typically the age is between 23 and 29. That's about 70% of the people we sell to. They come in, they put their down payment, they, I mean, they still have to qualify for a loan. But that's the cool thing about this, is it's private ownership that, to people that are living there. One of the things we do is, is there's an onsite manager on, on, on the site that lives there to make sure it's clean and tidy and put dog parks in, because apparently 23 to 29 means you have to have a dog or a four. And so, you know, cleaning up after them is, is a big thing, but that's, you know, to make sure the rules and regs are, are abided by. We have an onsite manager that lives there that typically has a unit that's bought and they, they pay them to, to live there and manage the site. There, that's what's, this is not an apartment complex. And I think that's one major thing that's different than a lot of what you see. This is, these are individually owned by people who are getting a start in life. And they come in, they buy it, they live there for three, four years and they sell it. And the next one that's coming in does the same thing. So there, it's, it's cool to, I, I appreciate being involved in these types of projects, to hear the gratitude that comes from those people starting in life, that they have a place that they can call their own, that they're not, excuse my language, pissing away money and rent. And that they have something that they own. And that's what we do.
Mr. Mayor, we want to be respectful of your time. How can we put a fine point on what the council wants to see happen maybe next with this?
I personally like the idea. If we can see if a grocery store can come, great. If not, I would be okay with more commercial on the 400 North area. And probably back at the grocery store as well.
So just taking this and just trying to turn the corner?
Yeah, just put it all over there.
Just like continue it?
Yeah.
Okay.
If, if you couldn't get the grocery store?
Right. I wouldn't want residential there. Instead, I would want more commercial, yeah.
You, you're comfortable with condos back here to protect the opportunity?
Yeah.
I agree.
Just how it all works and the details of it.
Yeah, you, I don't want to get into the weeds of all that. You're the professional, but.
The planning commission's done a ton of that.
Yeah, they have.
So based on this layout, my concern is the property to the north being unusable if this gets developed. But I think even if, if you were to develop all of this commercially with some pads up front, and then eventually this, we're also, and Dave, I would recommend, I'd like to see, if possible, that the zone map, at least for that property, get cleaned up as soon as we can. Change it back to, or get it shown, commercial too. But I think even if, if we had the pads here and we could just have that strip, that would still be enough room to add, add some additional pads, commercial pads up there. So it's not, I don't think it would be a wasted space or an unusable space if, if we developed this front part first, all commercial, and then something happened in the back. I still think there would be room to do that. That being said, I, I am with Stacy. I, I feel comfortable with this. I'd love to see, love to see a grocery store right there. But, but I, I'm not opposed to the concept.
Corey's heard my opinion a couple of times on this, but this is probably the amount that I would be comfortable with. And I agree with Stacy and Shane, the commercial on this side. And I would like to see what that Plan B looks like, maybe a concept. But I think that we've went through a lot of the weeds on what we expect to see out of those. And so with what I've seen, I think that I'm comfortable with those.
You've already said your kind of piece.
I have.
Okay.
Would you make, would, sorry, would you, so if we, if we went forward with this, and I know we're going to have our own, create another zone, so would you just make this different? For now. So if you went forward with this project, would you make this different? The zone be different? Because this is going to be set aside for a store, this whole thing for now. I mean, him knowing that, but would, because I get, I still have that question that you're going to come, and, and I'm the same thing with, with Stacy. I, I don't, I don't want to see it go homes. Even in the future, if it stays, I want it to, I'm okay with it being vacant. I'm not, I like vacant ground, sorry, but you still.
I haven't heard anybody that's expressed support for this say they want the grocery store concept to be abandoned, right? So I think any next steps involve coming up with some way to preserve that space for that use, maybe until some future trigger might open up an opportunity for something different. I've talked with Corey a little bit about this. I don't want to speak for you, but I think to some degree that can work, provided that the rest of the project can proceed, you know, as we're sitting here. So that's, that's what I'm hearing people say. And I think that's how we would approach it from the zoning and a development agreement perspective. Does that sound?
Okay, yeah.
I think the reason that I could be supportive of the residential is because of what Corey's already pointed out. You've got, you've got railroad tracks right here, which isn't, you know, ideal, right? And you've already got mixed use or a multi, multi-home in the backyards of these ones as well. So it's not like you're taking that and putting it in a single family neighborhood.
Only thing Chad really is excited about is another roundabout on Fort North. I know that, right here.
So, yeah, one more.
At least it will be big, though. It'll be really, really big.
Really big. So we get the trucks up Fort North, and the trucks into the grocery store.
Yeah. So Chad, let me ask you that, because Spanish Fork Parkway is going to be a pretty busy road. We expect it to be, right?
Will be.
If this is a grocery store, I assume that the truck entrance to get back here, you can see the bays are right here, is going to be right here. Is it going to be an issue having trucks come in and out on Spanish Fork Parkway?
No, Spanish Fork Parkway is a very wide road, and it would probably just circle a truck in and out. But it looks like to me, their docks will be right. You can see they've got two trucks kind of parked there, so they'd pull in and back and then out and around.
And the idea with this was a, it was a private entrance for the grocery store only, for just trucks. That was the idea with that.
Not, not to, and you got what I feel about it, but just to, I've had, I've had the opportunity to be working with my father-in-law to get his history. And just out of the blue, he started talking and I'm recording this, trying to get that down. And guess what he talked about? About 10 markets, neighborhood markets through our community. And here we are trying to go back to these markets so that you can walk to the grocery store. And they were just, they were small markets, of course. But we had a whole bunch of them. And we had a good laugh about that, because I told, I says, God, that's just what we're trying to get, so you can walk to the neighborhood. Maybe we just need to go back to those smaller markets. Anyway.
Had it right once.
Thanks. Thank you for your patience and.
Maybe the last thing that I'll mention, by way of, from what I've heard tonight, next step would be to refine draft language that we have for a zone. Then actually, I'm going to replace an existing zone that we have on the books now. And scheduling the formal process, zone change, plan approval, as part of that, neighborhood meeting here sometime likely within the next 30 days. And just kind of, you know, a normal track for a project that's at least a little bit atypical.
I think that's a good summation. And I think, I think showing through those, through those steps, showing the Plan B of, hey, this is what we're going for here. But here's, you know, here's, here's what could turn this way if, how many of our years down the road of the drive we were talking about or something.
Yeah, that's right. This is a five acre parcel right here. These are one acre pads. So just to, I mean, I'll, I'll definitely lay out Plan B, but just to kind of show you, these are, you know, one acre pads that could easily, I think, be turned into just exactly what the, at least four of these up here. But I'll lay it out, but we'll figure that out. But again, my, our point is to have a grocery store. I mean, that's, that's our objective. So I just hope you guys are convinced of that, that that's where we are trying to go. And with your help, I appreciate the time and we'll proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Corey.
Appreciate you. Thank you, staff. Thanks, Dave. Good questions, counsel. Thanks for running that down. And yeah, it's not lost. Thank you, Planning Commission, for all the time you spent on this and, and working with the applicant and staff as well. Okay, with that, that takes us to item 18, unless there's anything else that you wanted to bring up before we adjourn to closed session, or reasonably imminent litigation or land transaction?
I move to go into closed session for land transaction, strategic sessions to discuss pending or reasonable imminent litigation.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Carden, seconded by Councilman Argyle, to go into closed session, roll call, vote. Councilwoman Beck?
Yes.
Councilman Marshall?
Yes.
Councilman Euler?
Yes.
Councilman Carden?
Yes.
Councilman Argyle?
Yes.
We're adjourned. Thank you for joining us. Appreciate it.